Call to order the common council meeting on March 14th at 7:31. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radafarana. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
He is absent. What's the excuse?
Absent. Thank you so much. You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, excellent. All right, first up is public appearances for non-agenda items. We've got a couple of proclamations first. First one is recognizing March as Women's History Month. Whereas, Women's History Month has its origin in 1981 when Congress asked President Reagan to issue proclamation proclaiming March 7th, 1982, as the first Women's History Week. And whereas, in 1987, Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. And whereas, Women's History Month is observed each March to celebrate women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually since 1987. And whereas, women have been leaders in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, and also in moments, including the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, the Pittsburgh female population is about 46.8%, according to the 2020 U.S. Census. And whereas, locally, Pittsburgh women of every race, class, and ethnic background made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city and state in numerous ways. And whereas, Pittsburgh women of every race, class, and ethnic background served and continue serving as leaders of every major social change movement. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh is fortunate to have women leaders serving in various roles and positions in local government, businesses, academia, social services, and public safety. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Aaron Richardson, along with the common council of the city of Pittsburgh proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month in the city of Pittsburgh, and call upon the people of Pittsburgh to congratulate and honor all women and observe March as Women's History Month. I know last week was the International History, Women's History Day as well. All right, and then next, we also would like to recognize a number of Pittsburgh businesses. And I know we've got a number of people here. Do you want, want y'all, if you can come up with me as I, if you want to read this, as I read this one, you want y'all, will you go up here? Come on, Mandy, bring all your people up. We'll move down a little bit so we're a little more centered. All right, so we have proclamation recognizing communities work from Pittsburgh businesses. Whereas Dane County administers the federal senior nutrition program for adults 60 years and older. And whereas, the senior nutrition program helps those who are nutritionally at risk and/or socially isolated. And whereas, Dane County contracts with local caterers to purchase, prepare, and distribute food for the senior nutrition program. And whereas, Dane County contracts with senior centers to manage the senior nutrition program, providing meals onsite and meals to homebound older adults Monday through Friday. And whereas, the caterer providing food for the Pittsburgh Senior Center and several other senior centers abruptly entered their contract with Dane County. And whereas, the Pittsburgh Senior Center reached out to local businesses for help in providing meals to older adults in Pittsburgh during the absence of a caterer. And whereas, several Pittsburgh businesses quickly responded to the senior center's request for help by providing affordable meals, shelf-stable food items, and monetary donations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pittsburgh Senior Center and the Pittsburgh Common Council would like to recognize and thank the following businesses for their support: Great Dane, Oasis Cafe, Benvenutos, The Thirsty Goat, Quick Trip, Oak Bank, Odysseus, Pet Supplies Plus, and Capital Petroleum for providing affordable meals, shelf-stable food items, and monetary donations until Dane County was able to secure a new caterer for the senior nutrition program. Be it further resolved that I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh of Wisconsin, hereby reclaim the city's gratitude to these businesses for their support. Thank you all very much for all the help you've provided us. Mandy, would you like to say a few words? I know that you were instrumental in getting all the help, but I really, I know that many of our citizens were put in a tough spot and really appreciate all of you for stepping up and helping and providing everything that you did for our seniors, and I'll let you speak a little more about that.
Yeah. Thank you so much, and especially Oak Bank for reaching out and getting others to know our story and to know what was going on. We have, as a result of that, have been able to send out probably close to 300 emergency meals because of all of the shelf-stable food that you guys brought. Our clients were so happy with the food from Great Dane and Benvenutos and Oasis and Thirsty Goat. Now having our old caterer back has been kind of a downer, but it's different. They're remembering the days of Benvenutos wafting through the senior center. Thank you so much for helping. You helped us keep our clients food secure during a time when we weren't sure what was going to happen and we didn't know how we were going to feed them. So thank you so much. And thank you so much for stepping up right away. Like I asked and I'm like, by the end of the week? Yep, sure. It was amazing. Thank you so much. We sincerely appreciate all of your efforts, and you guys were just so great to work with, too. Thank you.
All right, next up is mayoral appointment for Adam Guile. I think I said it right. If you want to come up, Adam. And this is to, so a member of the, Eric Nurelffairs had to step down because he had a job change and he has to work when the meetings are, and so Adam would be fulfilling that term. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I am a land surveyor by trade. I've been a land surveyor for 14 years. I also own and operate a farm on Burn Road, 108 acres over there. I also serve on the zoning board of appeals and am a resident of Pittsburgh, of course, so it's me in a nutshell, really little nutshell.
All right, any questions at all for Adam?
Or just crop?
Just crops.
What do you, what are you growing?
Corn and beans.
Okay, thank you.
Occasionally, we throw wheat in there as a rotation, but nowhere to store all of the straw, so.
Yeah, just, have you had a chance to look through the rural residential development criteria? That seems to be one of the things that the Ag and Rural Affairs deals with more than anything else.
Not, I can't recite any of it to you, but I certainly have had the opportunity to do that, yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else? More motion?
I'll move approval.
All right, moved by Jay, seconded by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Next is, thank you very much. You don't have to stay either. You can go home and enjoy the rest of your night. The Police Facility Oversight Committee, that group is wanting to get started, and so we are creating a mayoral ad hoc committee for that. And so want to let everyone know that, who's going to be on that. Jim Wheeler is going to be the chair and representing the council. And we'll also have on that committee Rose, I'm going to say your last name wrong, Agulu, thank you, as a city resident, also Andrew Potts, and then for Promega, David Rousseau. And part of that is Promega actually has actually oversight on the design of all the buildings on the campus, and we thought it would be important to just have them part of the process upfront so that we don't run any problems later. And then we'll have Chief Alfonso Morales from the police departments, and then also, another last name I'm going to struggle with, Juan Hinojos. And he's representing the union downstairs. And then representing staff is Paul Woodard, who is going to continue in a kind of an ad hoc position with the city and helping with the design. So that is, they're going to start their work here pretty quick. And so moving on from there.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, so from your comments, has this now been decided that we are going to stick yet another expensive building on this site?
I believe that's what the council has approved in the past, is going forward, yeah.
I think we should revisit that discussion and think about other places in the city where the investment of a fairly large expensive building could be beneficial towards spurring redevelopment.
Yeah, I mean, we approved getting the okay from the courts to you go across the street, so I guess that's what they're, and they can talk about it. It's something that we can ask them to speak on, but that's, and we've got to be a little careful because it's not a discussion item about that, but yeah, question?
Yeah, just curious about mayoral ad hoc committees. So there's no application process? There's no opening it to the public and asking people to, for their interest?
No, we reach out to people and try and fill that. It goes for a maximum of a year. Well, I guess after a year, the mayor can choose to have it go, continue on. Like, for example, the Healthy Neighborhoods was actually in ad hoc for like three years before we made it an official permanent committee.
And are the, will the committee be taking binding votes that are recommendations to council, or is it more of a discussion-based?
They, they don't like approve anything. Everything would come to the council and the council would then approve it and provide input. It's not like they're designing, and look at public, there'll be lots of public input to the process. It's not like they're just designing it comes here or anything like that.
I'm just curious about the inclusion of city staff members on the committee. I just, I'm not familiar with committees where staff members are like official members. Whereas they're just staffing the meetings, so maybe ad hoc is different in that way?
Yeah, go ahead.
This was put together similarly to the fire station oversight committees that also had staff a part of those committees as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, going on to, I will open the public hearing. The council proposed amendments to 2023 ARPA TID closure investment plan. I do not have anyone that has wanted to speak, and we didn't get any emails or anything, so seeing nothing. Looks like everyone online is people I know. I guess I will close that and we can continue forward to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
All right, a motion to approve by Jay.
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. Anything that people want to do separately? Seeing nothing. We'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, consent agenda is approved. The minister's report.
Good evening, everyone. We convened last Thursday evening for a special meeting for the fire department to participate in a bid for a fire department apparatus. I believe it was a utility truck. I want to report that the fire department was successful in their attempts to bid for that truck. They received or had the winning bid for approximately $86,000. So we are now the proud owners of another fire truck. B-cycle is going to be launching this spring. We are working on finalizing some details, so look for additional information to come forward as far as some kickoffs and some media events. There will be a community meeting in the council chambers on March 29th at 6:30 p.m. for the Taravessa Ag Park that is currently under design. Our annual financial audit is taking place this week. Planning and zoning is in the process of finalizing the selected vendors for our neighborhood plans, as well as our sustainability plan. The teen center RFP closed today, so tomorrow I assume they will be taking a look at the applications that were received or proposals that were received. And also, our plant commission application is now available via OpenGov. And finally, from the planning and zoning perspective, the Healthy Neighborhood Grant proposals are being reviewed the first week of April by Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. I believe that is April 5th, if I recall correctly. And last three items, Baker Tilly, the consulting firm doing our citywide staffing study, was here at City Hall last week. They're wrapping up some additional conversation and visits virtually with city staff this week. They've had very positive things to say about staff and their, the feedback that's been shared. And then a couple of updates finally on road projects. The intersection of Sine and Lacy Road is closing April 3rd. The anticipated closure will go through June. And Lacy Road project from Seminole Highway to Fitchrona Road is still on schedule. You'll see some brush removal beginning soon, and then the planned road closures are for early June when school is out, is what the plan is at this point in time. So I have any questions?
Questions at all? All right, seeing none. We'll go to new business. The reason why we changed the agenda and put new business first is that we have to approve one of these actually expenditures for legal defense before we close the TID, so that's why we switched this around. So we can start with the first record referral. Dave, do you want to do this one?
I'll move approval, Resolution R 4723, approving change order to well services at well five.
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. Public Works approved?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this day?
As you're aware, we, we saw reduced pumpage at that, that site, so we we had to investigate why it was, and we pulled, pulled the well and we found a lot of sand in the bottom. There's approximately 75 or 85 feet of sand in the bottom. Wow. And we also have a device, it's kind of a turbulence type thing that prevents the sand from getting pulled up through the, through the pump, you know, up into our system, and that needs to be replaced, too. And this was something when these, these well problems occur, they give you an estimate, but you know, really until you get everything taken apart and pulled apart, come up with a plan, do you exactly know what it's going to cost? It's always more than I hoped for, but they are, they are requesting additional funds to complete this. The two change orders, I believe, amount to $37,000 over what the original, what the original proposal was. And to give you a Reader's Digest version, what this, this device in the bottom does, it'll prevent sand from getting pulled up and damaging our pump and other parts of our system getting into our system, but it also, it causes the sand to kind of settle out into the bottom of the well. So at some point, you know, I'm sure I won't be on council anymore, but some point in the future, they'll have to, you know, probably have to pull the pump and take the sand out of the bottom of the well again in the future. It's just the nature of this. If, if I could have done it again, you know, we wouldn't have blasted. We built this well, but we were, we were trying to get enough capacity and it was a decision, you know, looked all right at the time, but you know, now having to rehab this well twice, it wasn't, wasn't a good decision in my mind.
Any questions?
Yeah, it seems like over the last few years, we've had a lot of well problems. Not just at well number five, but we've had other issues. Are, do we have a, any kind of plan or any kind of procedure that's in place now to make, to kind of prevent this from happening in the future if we have to build a new well?
It's a good question, Jay. We, we are working on that. You know, we had, Chad can probably address this a little more, but we had inner intervals, you know, that we would say do periodic maintenance on the wells, and I think it was roughly 10 years. And we're just, we're just looking at shortening those, those preventative maintenance intervals to, you know, it'll cost more for those, but hopefully, you know, you don't get hit with the big ticket item. Am I, am I close there, Chad?
I wasn't able to quite catch all of your question, Alder Allen, but what I can say is I have met with our Public Works and Water Utility Engineering last fall when we had a series of other repairs that had come forward to council and got a a really good understanding and overview of the overall water system as it works today and what their maintenance and operating schedule is currently. And what we are seeing, and one of the things that, the previous items before council was that microbe that was like, you know, going after the threads and those sorts of things. We are following some more recommendations as far as pulling the maintenance schedules earlier than we had typically done. I think in the past, it'd been every seven, seven years, and now we're probably going to be moving that up to perhaps as early as four or five years, just to make sure that we try to stay ahead of these sorts of things. So it's a bit of an ongoing, ongoing process of improvement, but I am confident that our engineering and water utility team is, is on top of things. I was assured of that last fall when I met with them.
Are these, are the, can we solve some of this by, by deepening the bore for the wells? Can we go down deeper and avoid some of these problems?
I, yeah, I don't have an answer.
There's other aquifers down there.
We're in a, you know, we're in a pretty deep aquifer if we look at, one of the objective measures is there's a, there's a radioactive isotope that came from when they exploded the, when they're doing above-ground hydrogen bomb testing in the 1950s. And, and they will see that in water all over the world, that isotope, but we've never found that in any of our, our, our bigger, deeper wells. So we know that the water, you know, that, that was 75 or 80 years ago now, at least 75 years, that it's taking the, you know, surface water, whatever, that long to get through down to our aquifer. So I'm satisfied we're deep enough, Jay. You know, what, where this microbial one came from, you know, as I talk to more people, this is more common than we believe. You know, I've talked to a number of different utilities, California, other places that have had the same problem, Australia, and you have solutions, you know, you, you put some chlorine down the well and hopefully, you know, you, you deal with it every so often, but why it's new now, why we haven't seen it, you know, we've had wells for a long time, I don't have an answer there. But I, I believe we are deep enough in the aquifer to, you know, the water we have is very, very good quality and sure if we would gain much going deeper, but I'm not a, you know, I'm not a hydrology engineer either.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing else, we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Next one is Gabriella, you doing this one? Go ahead.
I move approval of Resolution R 5423, amending the 2023 general fund budget, employee referral of police officers program as amended by finance, or sorry, as amended by personnel.
Second.
All right, signed by Jay. All right, do you want to speak to this?
Yes. Actually, I need to make a motion right away, though, to clarify the language.
You want to, you'll talk about what the steps, because I guess, there's a few things we're doing, I think. Do you want to talk about what you're going to be doing here? Explain to people before you go ahead and do it?
Yeah, we can do that. So this is, this is a new employee referral program. It's good through the end of the calendar year, and the goal is to hopefully recruit some people for the police department. We're currently, last I heard, which was a couple weeks ago, we had eight vacancies that would soon become 11 because of some forthcoming retirements out of 55, 55 positions that, that match that criteria. So it's a pretty serious lack of, lack of employees and not for, not for effort of trying. You know, we face a lot of different challenges in the police department for why they're recruiting. You can go on for a lot of reasons, but you know, part of the challenge is in Dane County, there's a lot of law enforcement agencies that pay more than us. So anyway, all that being said, it's been challenging and we do need to hire, so.
And how did personnel, what did personnel change?
Yeah, I can talk about that if you want.
Yeah, that'd be, oh, you gotta do that. Okay, all right, go ahead.
And so the program will pay bonuses to city employees, and that includes any city employee, not just police department employees. If they recruit somebody that then becomes hired and it goes in a stepwise system based on at what point they, how far along they get in the, in their employment. So it's not all one lump sum. It comes, and in the hope that we can get some, some good candidates to come through. So personnel, we, we'd had a long discussion about this with Sarah Olson, the HR director, and Chief Morales, the police chief. And we decided, we, we opted to clarify that we wanted to exclude family members from the bonus program. If you refer a family member, that isn't excluded. We wanted to identify exactly who is, is and is not eligible for the referral bonus, so clarify leadership roles, whether or not that those are, are included. We increased the entry-level referral bonus to $3,000, and we increased the lateral referral bonus, so that's officers that come with experience, to $5,000. And with those last two, since they were monetary amounts, the finance department did put together language to clarify exactly what accounts those are coming from, so I do need to make a motion to change that final language to the following. Be it here, be it further resolved by the Pittsburgh Common Council that it amends the 2023 general fund budget to reflect the use of $47,500 in police vacancy savings, account 100-5210-110, to pay for the estimated bonuses of $40,000, account 100-5143-165, and related benefits in FICA, 100-5143-131, and $4,440 in WRS, 100-5143-132.
All right, is there a second amendment? Seconded by Jay, and any, do you want to comment on the amendment at all?
It's just, it's the language that we need in order to increase those referral bonuses up to 3,000 for, for entry level and up to 5,000 for lateral. There is plenty of funding. I mean, essentially, we've had multiple positions vacant for the calendar year. We have far more than enough. And, you know, hopefully, we get, we use this and we thought that we should go up because there's no reason we can't. The budget is available and we really want to encourage hiring.
All right, any questions on the amendment? Randy?
No, we're only, we're only speaking to the financial component, correct?
To the amendment right now, yeah.
The financial component only.
Yeah, the what she just read with the, the dollar amounts, correct?
The dollar amount.
Yeah, the 5,000, I think it was.
Yes.
Yes.
But I did move it as amended by personnel, so.
Right, but first we'll do the amendment, and then we'll do the entire motion once we approve or don't approve the amendment. Yep, so we do the amendment first, and then we'll go back to the main motion. And then if you want to do more motions or change amendments, things like that, we'll have an opportunity then.
Very good.
All right, so any further questions on the amendment piece at all? Seeing none. We'll vote just on the amendment, so the whereas that Gabriella just read. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, so the amendment is approved. Now we're back on the main motion. And is there anything further, Gabriella?
I mean, there was a lot of details, but I think the, I gave you the broad strokes, but this is effective through December 31st of this year, and then we could, we could reevaluate and and potentially extend it at that point.
Sarah, I know you're online. Is there anything that you want to add at all?
Just that I, I really think that this may help. We already have a lateral that's going to be interviewing this Thursday, and that's a referral already from someone in the department. So anything that we can do to help our police department get fully staffed is wonderful. And again, these are budget savings from vacancies, so it's existing money that we can use. So thank you for your consideration.
And Deputy Chief, Oye?
Yeah, I, I am hopeful that this program will encourage not only police department staff, but all city staff to seek out qualified applicants. Obviously, this is not, the referral bonus in itself is not guaranteed that those people will be hired. There's a whole variety of checks and balances throughout the hiring process that may, may lead to a hire or may not lead to that hire, so. But it definitely is a starting point.
All right, Jay, and then Julia, and then Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, since you, since you came up, what, what do you, I mean, what's your gut feeling? Is this going to actually help recruit people? Are we going to solve this problem?
I think this problem goes beyond just a referral bonus as far as the police department, not only in Pittsburgh, but in, in general. There's a whole variety of factors at play, probably too long for this common council meeting. However, like I said, it's, it's a starting point, and the discussions that have occurred in the police department is, at least we're giving, we're providing that bonus to people that have already proven themselves, who are already here within the city, to encourage those potentially getting hired by the police department to come to the police department. So instead of So instead of giving a hiring bonus to somebody who hasn't even proven themselves, we're giving it to the, the employees that currently have dedicated themselves to the city.
Well, I, I don't want to give you the impression that I'm opposed to this because I'm not. I just want to know if there's other things we need to be doing because if we're, if we're down in our police department, I mean, the numbers that Gabriella just threw out there, we're, we're basically 20% below the staffing we're authorized to have, that's a problem. That's a major problem. And, you know, as people have talked about with the addition of, of, of the Southdale neighborhood and other things going on in the city, we need to have sta, we, I presume that was sworn officers, right? 55 sworn officers. So I remember when we only had 42 and, but, but we were staffed, we had all 42 filled, so that, so if we're 11 people down, we're barely above where we were 12 years ago as far as current staff, as, as far as current actual staffing is.
You're not going to get much argument from me.
So I, what I'm trying to draw out of you is, are there other things we need to do in addition to this that will help?
Well, I think going beyond this.
I would say, I don't want to get too off topic, they are looking at other options because this is not a magic bullet by any means. And so I know that both the departments are, are looking at other things as well. I don't want to get too off topic of the referral bonus, but yes, there are plenty of other things that we are considering and trying to do. All right, Julia and then Randy after that.
No, so I think Matt already responded, the question, in personnel, we discuss this in lengthy terms and then one of the question that we asked the chief is, is the referral bonuses versus the hiring bonuses? And he preferred the, the referral bonuses.
Correct.
The reason that you mentioned, so that's.
Correct. Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think that the, I mean, in support of the referral bonuses, but I believe that it should be include, you should be included in that referral bonus and the lieutenants as well. And where the department head or depart, would be Chief Morales would not be included. I'd like to broaden this even further. I think there's no reason why you couldn't refer somebody and receive that bonus and if you're part of the interview process, you would exclude yourself. I don't know if you have a thought on that?
Well, I did talk with Chief Morales earlier after he had some further discussions. He's in support of that, that thought process. As far as from my perspective, I guess I could see it either way. Regardless if, if I'm not involved in the hiring process itself, I play a fairly large role in the organization of the hiring process and at the end of the day, the, the final decision on, on moving forward with a, a potential candidate. So how, whatever direction the, the council chooses to take, I would probably say that if, if there were anybody in the police department of, of command staff ranking, it would probably stop at the lieutenants and, and lower as far as their ability to recuse themselves from the, the entire hiring process.
I would like to, to amend.
Okay.
Offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to offer an amendment to, to include the lieutenants and the, the deputy police chief in the referral bonus.
All right, signed by Dave. All right, so now we can talk about including the deputy chief lieutenants. Do you want to speak to that, Julia?
Yeah, we discussed this with the chief in our personnel committee and, and also we discussed it with Sarachu and, and the issue is when you have, it could get the conflict of interest or perception when you have hiring people or, or start that it has a hired position, you know, it could be, the perception could not be good, you know, because it could be a conflict of interest. I want to tell you in my, in my work, we have these referral bonuses and practically manage it and up, they are excluded because we are the one that we hire people. So, so it's no, we shouldn't be, you know, bringing people because we know that we are going to hire people and we have a huge, you know, how going to say, influence in managing and controlling that process. So I think we need to be careful here, you know, for perception. Maybe we can start with a pilot program up to sergeant and maybe we can evaluate in the future to include a lieutenant, but I think, Matt, in your case, you know, you're running the hiring process indirectly, indirectly and, and the optics is going to be bad.
Yeah, I, I think, as I stated before, I don't know if I would be in, in agreement to include myself because of my direct impact in the actual hiring process itself. I think the lieutenants do have the ability to more easily recuse themselves in the, in the process on how it's currently constructed so that I think would be less of a conflict of interest. However, again, I'll defer to the council for that.
Randy?
Yeah, I'm going to disagree with my Alder, my colleague, I should say. I come from a work environment that's very different than what you're describing. It's very family oriented. It's a Fortune 500 company and they encourage family members. If they're, it's just long as there's no direct report. I think, I think that given the situation that we're in right now, I suspect that everyone with, every sworn law enforcement, law, sworn law enforcement within the Pittsburgh Police Department may have somebody that may want to refer and I don't want to exclude anyone that may be of value to our, our police department. So I think all of our sworn officers are professional and they, they're going to know when, and the chief of police is going to know when they should recuse, exclude themselves as well from that conversation or that interview. So it's just my position.
Gabriella?
Yeah, the only thing about, if you, if you change the policy to add the lieutenants or add the lieutenant and the deputy chief, I think there would have to be stipulations in the policy about when recusal is required. The, the idea of removing, I mean, thinking, I didn't, this didn't occur to me at the time, but thinking back on it, I mean, removing those higher level positions is sort of an elegant way to make sure that you never need a recusal because one of those people is going to be involved in the hiring process. And so if you exclude them, then you're never going to have a conflict of interest. Are the sergeants ever involved in the hiring process?
The only point that the sergeants would be included would be whoever, whichever one of the sergeants is included in the first panel interview and if they're involved in a background investigation or assigned to background investigation.
But they don't have hiring authority?
They don't have hiring authority, but we would not include them if that's the person that they referred. They wouldn't be doing their background, so to speak.
Yeah, I just think if we, if they pass this amendment, I think we should clarify that there has to be, there like is a required recusal under certain circumstances. And again, it's a perception thing, right? I, I have no doubt that people would recuse themselves under the right circumstances, but, you know, we should just make sure that that's, that that's happening and that that's transparent to the public.
All right, anyone else?
Could we just repeat what the amendment is that's on the floor?
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
To test my memory, huh? I want to, I want to broaden the, the scope of the referral bonus to include lieutenants and the deputy police chief as well.
So they would be eligible to get the bonus?
They would be eligible for the bonus.
Well, right now they are not.
So the deputy chief has said that he's not interested in that. So would you be willing to remove that from the amendment?
Sure, I'll, I'll remove it if he's, if he's not.
Dave, are you okay with the friendly to change that as well? Okay, so friendly, Randy is changing his amendment to just include the lieutenants in the referral bonus as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, Joe?
So just to Alder Gierhardt's point, is there language that we can also add to make it sort of a guarantee versus something that's sort of on the discretion, on the discretion of the leadership to recuse themselves? Like I think it should be required rather than somebody to make that decision on their own and that's not to question any of the leadership here, it's just a safeguard regardless of who's in the position.
Chad, it looks like you might want to say something?
I think perhaps the council could authorize staff to craft some language to this policy that references that very point, something along the lines of employees making the referral shall be expected to recuse or excuse themselves from participating in, in phases of the process or hiring process that would involve the referred employee.
Can we change the expected to required?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Because really it's for all positions and not just the lieutenants. All positions should be recusing themselves from.
So is that an amendment to the amendment?
No, I think that's just direction to staff that they will do that.
I'm sure Sarah's taking copious notes.
All right, further questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, so it's, the amendment on the table is that we will include lieutenants as eligible for the bonus with, and then there is just direction to staff to make sure that all people that refer someone are recused themselves from the process. All right, so we're just.
Just one more. Alder, you dealt, were you also including family members as referrals as well?
Yes, I am, family members as well.
Could you clarify what you mean by that? So they were, so they were eligible, so if they refer a family member, then the family member, so I think right now it says if they refer a family member, they're not eligible, but you think that if they refer a family member that they would be eligible?
Sure.
Is that?
Do that as a separate amendment?
Yeah, that, you didn't say that, so I think that's a separate amendment.
Or if you want to add it as a separate amendment, sure.
Yeah, that, because that wasn't, I don't want to confuse it anymore because that wasn't, you didn't say that initially. So I want to just stick on the amendment right now, which is adding the lieutenants as eligible. So that's the amendment that we're on right now. I do not see any discussion on just that part. And so we can go ahead and vote on adding amendments, the lieutenants, the eligibility list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Now, do you want to do another change, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay, what's that?
That would be to add family members to, to, for the officers to receive the, the referral bonus in the case of if it's a family member. Am I pulling that out correctly from the original?
No, I think what we had discussed was in general, family members, like even if somebody in the clerk's office had a family member that was, for, that they would be excluded from that bonus as well. So anybody that's family members with the person they're referring would not be eligible for the bonus. That's, that's, that's the resolution on the table.
All right.
And so what's your amendment?
I would, my amendment is for the family member to, to receive that bonus. I'm talking about the employee now. Am I, am I missing the point here?
So I think, so I, let me, tell me if I'm understanding you correctly and try and word a little better. So right now, so you want to change it so that if an employee refers a family member, they are eligible for the bonus?
Absolutely.
Any employee?
Any employee.
Okay, because right now employees are not eligible, so the amendment is to make family members of employee, if, if a employee refers a family member, they would be eligible for the bonus.
Right, I think we're getting too deep, but yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that's the amendment. Is there a second to that amendment? I do not hear one, so that would die on the, that would die, that would not, go forward. All right. All right, so we are back to the amended motion, which includes the lieutenants and the higher amounts. Any further discussion on the overall, the motion as currently written? All right, seeing none. We will now vote on the final, final time voting as changed. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Excellent, thank you. All right, the next to, just before I have you do the resolution, we have closed sessions here. I don't think we need them, we had put them in here, but in talking with Valerie, we're not going to need them if for some reason we decide we need to, we can, but we're not going to need to, but if you want to do the motion, Randy, for number three, that'd be great.
Motion to approve resolution R dash 60 dash 23, authorizing legal services in the defense of FTC Retail, Retail East LLC exclusive tax assessment lawsuit.
Second.
Signed by Jay, the finance approved?
Finance approved.
All right, and we will need a two-thirds vote on this. Valerie, are you going to speak to this or do you want? Randy, do you?
Sure, I can come up and give you a brief overview. Good evening. So this is an excessive tax assessment lawsuit that was filed by, it is one lawsuit, involves nine separate properties. The complaint is in your pocket and this resolution authorizes staff to hire a legal firm to assist with the defense of this case.
All right, questions, comments at all? All right, seeing none. We can go ahead and vote then. All in favor of resolution R 6023, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, that passes the two-thirds mark. And then we can go down then to number seven, since we don't need to do the closed session. Randy?
Motion to approve resolution R dash 6, 64 dash 23, authorizing legal services in the defense of Gold Leaf, Pittsburgh, Seminole Creek, excessive tax assessment lawsuit.
Second.
Signed by Jay, the finance approved this?
Finance approved.
All right, and what, what property is this?
And this is a similar situation, different apartment complexes, this is Gold Leaf, Pittsburgh and Seminole Creek.
And that's, is that right down at the end of the row here, the Addison?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. And again, this is an excessive tax assessment lawsuit that's been filed and adopting this resolution will enable staff to retain counsel to defend this case.
All right, any questions on this one? Yeah, Julia?
This do we have pending right now?
How many properties or how many cases altogether?
No, how many cases?
We have a number that are pending currently, some are in kind of negotiating stages to see if they'll be resolved. There are two that are currently actively heading to trial. There's also one case that's a little bit different because it's a challenge of the board's dismissal of the objection, so it's not a taxes, excessive tax assessment suit yet, but currently Hy-Vee and AMC are the two that are heading for trial. And this is, there's also Artisan Village that's currently pending, although that's not quite in trial-ready form yet. It may get there and now these two lawsuits.
Any other questions at all? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. All right, we can move on to planning commissions or anything for planning commission, Randy, you want to speak to?
No, there is nothing.
All right, Public Works, Dave?
Move approval, resolution R 4423, adopting the 2022 NR 216, permit annual report.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, the Public Works approved?
Public Works approved.
RCC approved?
Yes.
All right, and what's this about?
This is our, our annual stormwater permit application in relatively long form. Internal staff filled it out and basically we're, it was, as you read through, there's many, many pages in it, many things to fill out and I thought it was, I thought it was completed very completely and again, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't change too much from year to year unless we've had something, you know, something major, some major change in our processes or procedures.
Any questions for Dave or comments on this?
I'd just like to reemphasize, you know, this was, internal staff did this, this was not the county, you know, our, our stormwater engineer completed this.
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next one, Dave?
Next is resolution, I move approval, resolution R 4523, approving agreement with Aqua Backflow for Cross Connection Control and Grease Trap Services.
Second.
Signed by Jay, the Public Works approved?
Public Works approved.
The finance approved?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this one?
We have, uh, we've been using this company since I believe 2016 or maybe 2012. You have backflow preventers in, in buildings. I'll give you an example would be, say they have some sort of high pressure device that they use on their system that involves water and there's always the potential that it could force back into our system and put something into our water system. They might be using some chemicals, so, but these businesses or buildings have the They might be using some chemicals, so, uh, but these businesses or buildings have these, uh, backflow preventers. And there's roughly nine hundred right now in the city, um, it's growing every year. And this company, they, they kind of catalog those, they check those. And then also part of MMSD, uh, you know, the restaurants and, and, and certain businesses, they have to have grease traps so that we're not getting all that pumped, uh, you know, over to Nine Springs, uh, where the facility is. And so this company, Aqua Backflow, we, we hire them to, to manage this process, to, uh, um, check the, the backflow preventers and inspect the grease trap. And if you look at it, if there, it's approximately a hundred fifty-seven thousand, uh, I think that was the number, or, uh, I, I did the calculation, and if you just looked at the backflow preventers, it's roughly a hundred fifty-seven dollars per backflow preventer. Now, there's more than the grease trap, so nothing is, nothing is cheap, and it seemed, it kind of passes my litmus test for, for, uh, a reasonable cost for this service.
Questions at all, Gabriella?
I'm just curious about, since this is a new, uh, service that we're contracting for, do we have concerns that we already have grease buildup in our system?
Well, it's not new, we've been, we've been doing this since twenty, twenty, I think it might be twenty, at least twenty sixteen and maybe twenty twelve. That, um, we've, we've been doing this, so, uh, I'd have to refer you to Tim, you know, I'll put him on the spot, but I, I, I don't think we, I don't think we have a, uh, you know, a problem with accumulated that we're not aware of.
Okay, great.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That is approved, one more, Dave?
I move approval of Resolution R forty-nine twenty-three, approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of third addition to Terra Vessa.
Second.
Sent by Jay, the Public Works approved?
Public Works approved.
All right, what's this one about?
Standard subdivision, uh, improvement, uh, like I say, the third, third grouping of, of homes in, in, uh, Terra Vessa. This is a relatively large, when you look at the plat, you know, there's a lot of units in this, this is a, this is a big, uh, a big addition to, uh, Fitchburg as all of the Terra Vessa ones have been, but this is a standard subdivision, uh, improvement agreement. I don't think there was anything unique in this one.
Any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That's approved, anything else on Public Works?
Uh, I just wanted to highlight, I think all of you saw the email from the, um, from Madison Metro, uh, complimenting our, our streets department on keeping the, um, the streets drivable for their buses. And I think that says a lot about Mark and the, and the team down there, uh, you know, how much they value, value public safety and, and their responsiveness. Every, I think everyone knows what a great group they are.
All right, going on to Park Commission.
Uh, Park, uh, Commission met on March second, and we discussed a couple of action items. The biggest was the Stoner Prairie Park Plan Approval. Um, so we have a lot of neighbor that came, and they voiced their concern about the, the master plan that Park Commission approved. Uh, so after hearing their, uh, inputs, um, Park Commission decided to compromise and to make some changes to the plan, minor changes, I would say, um, and those revision are now under, I think the, I don't know, Chad, I think Scott already sent the revision to, to the architect, I think so?
I believe that's the case, but I'm not certain.
So that, when it's come back, it's, I hope this is the final plat, so we can move forward with this park. We also discussed the, the Crescent Crossing Outload eleven for the pla-, uh, Dog Playground Approval. We approved that, um, we also approved the extension of the Maggo Park Trail, um, expansion, we approved that. We discussed about, um, the capital improvement plan, um, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three proposal. We discussed the tree preservation ordinance, uh, that is going to come to committee of the whole, when is it, twenty-second, is it next week? Yeah, okay. Um, and then we discussed community gardens, the twenty twenty-three update, so it was a long meeting.
All right, thank you. Valerie Bird?
We are meeting tomorrow.
All right, Commissioner Nationale?
I, I believe I handed out everyone, I think you've seen the, uh, the Fitchburg Senior Center and New Bridge Madison Diversity Inclusion Program on March thirtieth, uh, is holding as part of Women's History Month. Uh, you see Gloria, Pia, Frances, and Margarita are going to be speaking, uh, very excited about this event. If you can make it, I believe it'll be well worth your, well worth your time, and, uh, so again, pass this on to people that you know. Uh, I think it's a great, a great event. The Friends of the, uh, Friends of Senior Center, they approved paying, uh, for some three D renderings of the patio. They, they came up with another two thousand dollars, uh, for that, and previously they had paid eight thousand for schematic designs and cost estimates. So again, the, the Friends Group really steps up. Please mark your calendars for the Pancake Breakfast, April twenty-third from eight to twelve. Uh, price will be twelve dollars for adults, five for children, and they, they are in need of additional, uh, workers. The Senior Center Friends applied for a Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Grant, you know, for transportation to allow, uh, to get us some seniors, you know, to the, uh, Senior Center at a time besides lunchtime. And the last thing I, I'd, uh, I'd say is the, uh, the patio costs came in higher than expected. You know, it's kind of the same story we hear now and again, but, uh, Senior Center will begin another round of fundraising to, uh, to hopefully, uh, come up with that. I'm sure they will come up with the additional costs for that, and, uh, you heard about, uh, Consolidated Foods will now be taking over our, will be providing our, our caterer for the, for the meals at the Senior Center now.
All right, thank you. RCC?
We had a very packed meeting yesterday, um, you, if you are getting questions about no mo may, uh, from residents, we did discuss that. Phil Groupie is working on some sort of way to, uh, get around the ordinances, uh, to make sure that people could do this in an official way. It looks like we might have some sort of sign up if people want to participate. Ultimately, to completely allow it will require a change in our ordinances, that's going to be a little bit more comprehensive and something that we probably can't do this year, but maybe we can do for a future year. Although he did speak to the fact that, you know, no mo may is great, and it's really something that people have rallied behind, but ultimately we should think more about how we can include more native plants in people's yards. Uh, because growing turf grass, eh, with, if there's clover, if there's dandelions, there have some pollinator benefits, but really truly, you know, creating an environment for pollinators and other, um, other native, uh, other creatures requires some native plants. So maybe looking at updating the ordinances to allow for that, um, in people's personal yards is sort of a long term. Uh, but we are working on something for, for this May. Uh, second thing, uh, Ben Schulte directed a dark sky lighting ordinance, um, to take a look at, we discussed that. That's something that we're kind of going to continue discussing as a possibility for the future. A few save the dates, so our waterway cleanup, uh, this year is Saturday, April fifteenth, from nine to eleven AM. Uh, and that's going to be at Dunsmarsh, Swan Creek, Quarry Hill, and Yarmouth Greenway like it has been in the past. Uh, there is information on the website, and we provide, you know, trash bags and gloves and, and all those things, so, uh, feel free to, hopefully some, we'll see some of you out there. Second, save the date would be the, uh, the, our spring recycling event on April twenty-ninth, from eight to eleven AM. We do need some volunteers, so if any of the Alders want to sign up, we'd love to have you again. Uh, and that is our electronics recycling and paper shredding event. We also do med drop, but I should note, med drop is year-round, you can do it any time of year at the police department, so you don't have to wait in line for the electronics people in order to do your med drop, you can do it any time of year, so, um, you can bring it then, but also any time. Uh, two more events that we're planning, we're looking at a water quality event, uh, on May eighteenth, it looks like, from six to seven thirty, as soon as we have that, um, you know, finalized, I can let you know, and we're also looking at a June eighth event, potentially doing kind of a, a try, an electric bike event, uh, maybe at McKee Farms Park at six thirty, so it's evening event, um, so I'll let you know as soon as we have it, but I wanted to have it on your radar. We got quite a few updates about stormwater, but a couple of fun things to note is there will be a new stormwater mural going in, um, I guess near the Atomic Coy, I don't know exactly where, but, uh, that's going to be coming soon. And they're working on potentially doing a new street sweeper contest, since we have a second street sweeper. We'll do something like we did last time and have a, um, contest for children to submit designs, so that'll be fun. Sustainability Plan, they did bidder interviews, they had five bids for the sustainability plan, which is quite good. Uh, did interviews, they're finalizing the person, and we should see that contract come through pretty soon, so that's very exciting. And then last thing is we do have an opening on RCC, so we would, uh, if anyone's interested in resource conservation, stormwater, climate change, sustainability, uh, that committee is for you, so please, please put in an application.
All right, what about TTC?
Uh, before you, before, yeah, just, I wanted to go back to something you had mentioned about the dark sky.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I haven't had a chance to dig into this, um, but about a year ago, maybe, no, actually it was two years ago, it was shortly after I got elected. I noticed in, uh, in Uptown, uh, along Central Parkway, there are lighting fixtures along the street that are just globes. And I seem to recall, years ago, we passed an ordinance that said that that was not permitted, that all of the lighting fixtures, all of the public lighting fixtures, all of the parking lot fixtures were supposed to be zero cutoff fixtures. I don't know what happened to that, I don't know if it got lost somewhere in the recodification of our ordinances, but, um, if you're going to look into the dark sky situation, that's something that needs to be reviewed. I know that those types of fixtures are permitted under the SMART code, but they shouldn't be permitted in the city under the other part of our ordinance that, that should have, um, that should have said, these should be zero cutoff fixtures. So I would like us to look into that some more.
Yeah, I agree, I, I've seen those before and those, uh, I've noted that, and there was, Ben did have some language in there that were, were referred to SMART code, I have to take a look to, I can't say exactly what that, but obviously we have to address that specifically since it's a separate, um, item, but I also have seen those, and that has irritated me. So it's something we need to discuss, uh, for sure, especially if we continue doing things with SMART code. I don't personally want to see that, and I think if we do continue doing that, we should have a discussion about whether or not that's okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe Chad, can you just confirm that they are not cutoff lights? They sure don't look like it, but.
Hey, those are not zero cutoffs.
I'd be surprised if they are.
No, they aren't, I can tell you they are not, the, the light bulb, a zero cutoff fixture is supposed to have, as you're looking at the side of the lamp, you should not see light coming from the side of the lamp. This has the lamp right in the center of a globe, it's, it's almost all the streetlights on Central Parkway, which I don't, I don't, I don't understand how that happened. Um, I don't know when the ordinance got changed or left out or whatever happened, but that needs to be addressed.
So it's my understanding that, um, SMART code does have its own lighting standards. Uh, we can certainly take a look at the situation that you've mentioned in, uh, in Uptown. And otherwise, the city does not have an ordinance regulating its lighting conditions.
We, we used to though.
I, I, I'm just reporting what I, I, what I've been told.
Yes.
And, uh, I think that this dark sky ordinance is something that I know our planning and zoning, uh, department is looking at in conjunction with Ben Schulte and the RCC, and I would anticipate that they'll get a final draft, uh, over the next, you know, weeks or couple of months or whatever the case may be for council to consider.
All right, seeing nothing else, how about TTC?
Yes, so we met on March ninth, and, uh, a couple of things came up, so Sign Road is obviously underway this year and the following year. There was a public meeting on March eighth, uh, that I, that I recommend that you watch if you're really interested in, in the safety of the road and, uh, and the development of the road, what that looks like. That's available on, on our YouTube channel and also on our, on our website through, um, the on-demand. So please take a look at that if you want some updates about Sign Road, especially in regards to the safety, which I know that came up quite extensively in that meeting. Uh, second thing, we have bids open on Lacy Road, and so we probably will be seeing that resolution come through. It looks like maybe for once in our, in our experience, maybe it comes in a little bit below the engineer's estimate, so that's what I'm hoping that we actually see, that's what I've heard is possible, so, um, that should be coming soon. And then I did want to note, I mentioned about the Route seventy-five bus route, my concern if there was some sort of change in it. There is not a change in the bus seventy-five, it will be the same as before. The change was because certain routes, that weekend routes in Fitchburg, I think it was the fifty-nine goes down McKee Road, and those are going away, so they had to change the signs out, so any, so they were moving those, uh, locations, but it wasn't for the seventy-five, it was for a different route, so, um, no worries on the Route seventy-five, but if you take the bus, please, please, please look at the maps and understand how it's changing, because it's a significant, significant change. Um, and I don't want anyone to be surprised come June, that's all.
All right, thank you. Seda?
Seda, we have not met, we have a, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-third of March.
All right, what about Agribank Affairs?
Uh, we have not met since the, uh, annual meeting, so, uh, nothing to report.
All right, Shannon EMS?
Uh, we meet on Thursday, so no report.
All right, Bike Committee? Um, there hasn't been a meeting, but, um, the, our chair, um, Mark Hamilton has been in communication with, um, Renee Callaway, Madison's B-cycle and Pedestrian Coordinator. Um, just looking at allied Dunsmarsh neighborhood as a site for another, um, Bicycle station in the future. But, um, they just want to kind of clear up kind of where the border between Madison and Fitchburg stops. They're looking at a site at the Boys and Girls Club, um, for anybody that knows the borders there. The parking lot is Madison, and as soon as you get out of the parking lot, the building and the sidewalk around it is Fitchburg. So I think if they put a B-cycle there, it'll, you know, it'll be ours. Um, so that's what we're sort of looking into and exploring, um, for the next phase of the B-cycle project. That's all I've got for Bike Report, or Bike Committee. All right, thank you. Tree Advisory?
Uh, we met on March, uh, ninth, um, we discussed the tree preservation ordinance update. Um, this coming to Cow meeting on March twenty-second. Um, we also have some save the date for the twenty twenty-three Arbor Day Tree Planting Events. If, on April twenty-ninth, uh, it's a Friday, um, the event will be working with the Madison Canopy Tree in the North Fish Hatchery Road, the Post Road, we are going to be planting some trees. And then the other, the second location for Saturday, April twenty-nine, at the beginning, we discussed Southdale, but because we don't know what is the plan for that park yet, um, so we don't want to plant trees that then we need to remove because we are doing some, uh, changes in the park, so we are looking for another, um, location. And we want to do it in one of the healthy neighborhood, uh, eh, areas, so I think we are going to go to Belmar for you in District One, so, um, so, but I want to confirm that, but this is the second location, so, um, if you want to volunteer for, uh, for this event, please contact Anna Healy in the Tree, um, Department. It's not Tree Department. Forestry, yeah.
All right.
And that's it.
All right, thank you. Learning Marcus Preservation?
No report.
All right, Housing Advisory?
Uh, we met yesterday, um, we had a presentation from, um, Jill at the Senior Center. The big point is we don't have enough affordable housing, um, we have a lot more in, coming, uh, but that still won't be enough. Um, it's a problem for our senior communities, and it's a problem frankly for the entire city and the region. Um, so we had a lot of discussion about that, but some high-level points from, um, Jill's presentation. She gave an overview of what affordable, existing senior housing there is. Um, Chapel Valley, uh, McKee Park Apartments, the Waterford, Sylvan Crossing, um, the Ridge at Madison and North Light Condominiums. Um, but we need, um, another six hundred and forty new or redeveloped units to meet the needs of residents between fifty-five, um, between now, fifty-five plus between now and, uh, twenty thirty. Um, approximately eighty percent of these units, or five hundred and twelve, should be affordable. Um, there have been several recently completed projects, including, uh, Quarry Ridge Resort Lifestyle Community, the Limerick, the Highline, and Novation Senior Commons. And coming soon, um, there is the Courtyard of Fitchburg, um, and the Sesta, um, so. the Courtyard of Fitchburg, and the Sesta, so there's a lot more info in the presentation than I've given to you, but if you look at the agendas for the City of Fitchburg and look at the, the agenda packet for the Housing Committee, you should be able to kind of see all the rich information that was provided by, by Jill, we also had some committee reports, or some staff reports about the kind of upcoming TID, which we're going to be talking about in council, but that was the gist of the discussion.
All right, thank you, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We were supposed to meet last week, but our meeting got rescheduled to April 5th.
All right, thank you, Finance Committee?
Finance? All right, before us, Resolution R-1423, authorizing increase in compensation for the City of Fitchburg elected officials effective May 1st, 2024, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, sounds good, and, do you want me to speak to this?
I do, yes, since you brought it forward.
Well, this is something that, really ever since we've been in council, people have talked about, the compensation hasn't been increased for over 20 years, might be even closer to 25 years, and so I did check in with other municipalities, other cities in Dane County, to see where they're at, and I put some numbers on the page, it can be changed, I guess I don't really care, but I was thinking if it's going to be another 20, 25 years before it changes again, let's maybe just get a little bit ahead of where other people are, so it is a little bit above where everyone else is, some prairies about 20,000 for the mayor, I think I have in here, for 25,000 for our mayor, these numbers can change, I, I just put it out there for discussion, and I don't know if you checked your email or not, but Valerie did send us an email that by statute, state statute, this is something that would need to be approved by two-thirds of the total members, not just present, so that means that six people would need to say yes, and so tonight, even though there's seven people here, we still need six people to say yes, I also have it effective May 1st of next year, one's that you can budget for it, and two, then the entire council can change at the same time, because you can't change it for someone until they've gone through an election, so that's why I had it for 2024, I think that's the basic stuff, whatever, it doesn't affect me, so do whatever you want with it, Jay.
So oddly enough, I was on the council the last time we increased wages for, for council members, now, I want to just give a full disclosure here, I have never taken any money from the City of Fitchburg, previously, when I was on the council, we didn't have a method of being able to not take a salary, so all the money that I earned in this position, either as councilor or as mayor, I donated to the Salvation Army. Since being elected two years ago, I just don't take a salary from the City of Fitchburg, I don't take any money, I don't need it, and the city can probably use it better for something else. Having said that, I do think it's important that we have people who are dedicating time to do this work, and it's important work that we do, but it takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of energy, and it takes a lot of effort, I mean, if you were to just look at, since, since the wage hasn't changed in many, many years, if you just do the very basics of attending the meetings that you're supposed to go to, and you presume that a council meeting is taking on average about two hours, and some of them take more, some of them take less, but if you look at it from that perspective, at the current wages, a council member makes about $6 an hour, which I think is pathetic, and I, I don't know that these numbers are the right numbers, if it were up to me, I'd make them much higher, but I don't, you know, you got to start somewhere, I know there was some discussion at some point about, about having an automatic increase for cost of living, I don't support that, I think we ought to be responsible, we ought to come here, we ought to take a vote, and do it just like we do with every other vote that we take, when we, when we, when we approve the budget to increase the wages of the employees, that's either due to a bargaining contract, or something that's been negotiated, so I think, I don't, I don't think we need to have that, but I do think we should increase these, these are probably reasonable numbers for now, but it is something that we probably should do every year, or every two years.
Before, I guess, I'll have Jill and then Dave after that, Valerie, we talked a little bit about the ability to have it, like, automatically increase, and do you want to share information about that?
Yes, I can do that, so there, in the statute, there is a way for a governing body to adopt the salary schedule to automatically increase for officials and staff other than elected officials, and so I included that in my email, and there's some information from the legal Wisconsin municipalities as well, so that's just really not something, whether you may want to do it or not, it's really just not something that you can do. That said, that there's nothing preventing from the council from revisiting this issue as often as they see fit, so long as you're not changing your compensation during the term in which you're serving, so, which is part of the, I think, timing behind this change, not going into effect for over a year from now, so.
So you get your way, Jay? I have Jill and then Dave, go ahead.
Sure, a couple things, we talked about this in Personnel, I mean, Jay, I think, gave a good summation of, like, hours that are put in, and I think it's important to emphasize that, I did bring up the suggestion of potentially serving either this council or even going back further to previous council members and mayors, just to understand, like, on average, how much time an alder or a mayor spends in their job, I think that's one important thing to note, the other thing to note is, I, if you add in sort of all of the other things that council members have to do, or don't even have to do, but sort of feel compelled to do, because it makes them better at their job and closer to the constituents, there's emails, there's newsletters, there's taking calls from people, there's, we don't have, we don't have our own, like, pages on the website like other cities have, so oftentimes, if we want to have some sort of a web presence, we have to pay for it ourselves, I know several council members do that, and the biggest thing I just want to say is that when you think about who's on the council now, and you think about who has the potential to be on the council, but have a lot of limiting factors, I see this more as an equity issue, only, I think, two of our current council members have children under 18, and what I see on this council as well as several other councils, is if you don't have a flexible job, or retired, or don't have kids, it's very difficult to be able to get people to even consider running for this position, particularly when you look at the makeup of Fitchburg, we have a lot of working-class people, we have a lot of people who have children, we have single parents, many of which have experiences that would enrich the decisions that we make, and we're ultimately decision-makers, we're the people who guide the budget, we're the people who guide the ordinances that this city makes, and we're limiting ourselves in kind of the, the rigidity of what this job requires and what it pays, ultimately, we're asking for volunteers, because 5,000 is really nothing, and, like, for me, for Jay, the 5K doesn't really make that much of a difference, but for somebody else, it may make the difference as to whether or not they want to serve, and, you know, $2,000 more isn't really going to change a whole lot, I'm going to just be honest with you, so I don't have a recommendation on the numbers, I just want to sort of spell out the reality, because I know that this is often a really, really charged issue that, that gets a lot of pushback from people in the public, but ultimately, when we're looking at the current amount that we spend on alder and mayor salary, it's $50,000, which is a drop in the bucket of our total budget, we've, we've signed off on things that are 25 times the size of that just in this meeting right now, so I really think this is a potential investment, but I think that we really need to perhaps do some sort of investigation as to what would be the right amount, and what the benefits of that would draw, like, who would, who would be able to come to the table if we increased this, and what impact would it have, and I would be fully in support of, I'm fully in support of making this increase, I just know that if we're going to consider future increases, maybe in addition to some of the staffing studies that we're doing, we also look at a comprehensive way to study what would be the right amount to increase in the future, so that's what I got.
Anything, Dave?
I'm, I'm for increasing the mayor and the council president, not for the alders, you know, I got into this to just serve, like, I, I accept no money for doing this job, and probably most of you would say, well, the city really isn't getting their money's worth either, but so be it, I, I look down the street, I'm down the street from my house on a daily basis, and I see people struggling to feed their children, clothe their children, put gas in their car, there's no way I, I could, I could vote for raising, raising the amount of money that, that I'd be getting.
Yes, so, so we discussed a lot about this in Personnel, and what I want to add is, we haven't increased this salary since 2000, since 1997, so 26 years ago, and we, if we look how the city has grown, you know, in these two decades, you know, so, and the amount of time that, the population growth, how many more committees that we have to participate, if you look at the average packet of a council meeting, it's 400 pages that we had to read, and I like to read those, you know, because I like to come here prepared, and I'm going to echo also what Joe mentioned about the equity part, and I think we need to make equity an important, as the center of all our decisions from now on, and I think that, you know, I know this is a very hot topic to discuss that, in my eight years in council, every time that someone wants to try, you know, we tried twice, and it was, no, 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 but I think we need to have this conversation, is, you know, is a difficult conversation, because we are discussing about the, the salary of some of us, we are going to continue to be here, or we are not going to be here, but, you know, we are established our future salary, but I think what we do here also, it has, you know, it value, you know, it's value, and, and some people, I agree, I, you know, I am very fortunate, because I have a very good salary, work, best job, which paid me very well, maybe I don't need to have this $5,000, I can donate it, but you know, there are not too many other people that they can do that, and if you are, you are a young family, that you need to pay maybe daycare, or someone to watch your kid, to come to a, a meeting, you know, it's an extra, you know, cost that you add to your, you know, to be part of that, I, I, I do this because I love my city, and I do it, for me, it's like a community service, but not everyone's had that, you know, flexibility, opportunity, benefit, whatever you want to call it, and also, we will need to look at, what is the future compensation, composition of this council, we need to open this to, so more people can, can be sitting in those, in these chairs, so, the other thing that I want to add is, to avoid in the future that this is a hot topic, maybe we need to include that, maybe we need to revise this composition like every five years, you know what I mean, so council in next five years, they don't have to, you know, it's time to review this, and it's not going to be like, oh, this is a hot topic that we had to do, we had to do it, you know what I mean, like, let's revise this composition like, I don't know, I say five years, it could be three, five, or ten, whatever, but I think we need to add that language to, to, to make it easier for future councils to have this conversation, because I know that for some of you, it's very difficult to have this conversation right now, but, because of the optics, but we need to think that we are doing this for future council members, for potential new council members, that they are going to be able to, you know, I think they're going to see, like, it makes sense to, if I had to pay extra expense to be, or to participate, I have some extra cash to do it, so that's it, this is what, I think this is time to do it, it's controversial, yes, it's controversial, we had to discuss it, yeah, we had to do it, and the amount, you know, I think the gap between 10 to 25 to the mayor, I think is too big, compared to the gap for the increase from the alders, from 5, 5,000 to 7,000, maybe we should have more of a fair gap there, but, you know, but, you know, I mean, I think is, I, I am in support to revise and to change and increase, how much the increase, you know, I am comfortable with this number, yes, I will increase maybe the, instead of $500 difference in between the council president, increase it like a $1,000, but I think it's time to do it.
All right, Gabriel?
Yeah, I wanted to echo what's been said in terms of, this is an equity issue, in terms of who's able to, to join the council, I, and just in the context of Women's History Month, I think a lot about women joining the council, and women that have, I don't have children, so I am able to do this, it makes it a lot easier, but women often bear the brunt of childcare, I know a lot of women my age that end up being the primary parent, and so if they were to run for office, childcare would probably be a necessary part of that, they would have to pay to have someone watch their children, and just that alone, I, I can't imagine how that would add up over time, certainly over, over, over a full year, and, and that's only one, one aspect of it, I mean, I, I think for the past, I think the alders that have been on the council probably haven't needed that money, but I think Joe said it well, when he said that it's about who might decide to run, that might be the deciding factor, is a slightly increased salary, might help them make that decision, because they want to, they want to serve their community, they want to have their voice heard, and that we might attract somebody that their voice hasn't been heard on the council before, I thought a lot about this when we were doing the Metro, the bus route redesign, I thought a lot about how people that primarily ride the bus, none of them were making this decision, and I didn't feel, I tried my best, and I, I used to take the bus, I, for the first three years I lived here, I only took the bus, but I had the ability very soon after that to buy a car, so I don't feel like I really had that full experience of, of relying completely on public transportation, and the way this city is built, we, people can't, literally can't get to this building on public transit, like, you have to have a car, or you have to have the ability to ride a bike, which is not always feasible for every single person, so I just, I, I think a lot about, about who we're excluding from this process, who we're excluding from these, from the ability to even run for these positions with a, with a low salary, I don't think this fixes that issue, but I do think it's, it's one step in the right direction, and I think we need a variety of voices, I think we need some new voices in the future coming in, that, that bring a different perspective, and this is why I support something like this.
Anyone else? All right, I do not see anyone else, I'm going to ask for a roll call, just because we need six yeses, I want to make sure that we have six yeses, so Tracy, if you could do the roll call, I appreciate it.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
That was a yes, she didn't have her mic on.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman? No. Alder Udell?
No.
And Wheeler is absent, four, four ayes, three nays, motion failed.
All right, thank you, all right, so we can go on to number B, Randy?
All right, B, motion to approve Resolution R-4323, terminating tax incremental district number four.
Second.
Sent it by Jay, and Misty, do you want to speak to this, I see you coming up here, do you want Randy to go for it, Randy, do you want to speak to it?
No, no, we're, Misty and I already worked this out, she's handled this all the way through, we want to see her to the, to the end here.
All right, and I know on this one, we also will need a roll call, we only need a majority, but it's, it does need to be a roll call vote when we get to that point.
Exactly, so as Randy mentioned, hopefully this is the last resolution we have to approve for TID 4, this is the official closure, so the TID has been very successful, this is the TID that's here, kind of around City Hall, and went all up and paid for the interchange that was newly put in as well, so very, very successful TID, we'll So very, very successful TID will actually have some excess increment left at the end of it, uh, which we'll be able to share with the city of Fitchburg as well as the other overlying jurisdictions. That's a big piece of how that investment plan that we'll be talking about later tonight is funded. Uh, so once we approve this tonight, uh, it is before the magic April fifteenth date. So that's an important date from a TID perspective. Then we'll go through the final audit and then we will disperse that extra funds.
Questions for Misty at all? I do not see any, so seeing none, I guess we can go ahead and vote. Oh yeah, we gotta roll call it. All right, Tracy, if you could do the roll call vote, please.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, excellent. All right, uh, number C.
All right. Uh, motion to approve Resolution R dash five, one, dash two, three, amending the 2023 budget for various funds, uh, 2022 carryovers.
Second.
Sent it by Gabriella. And I know that this one also needs two thirds. Who's gonna speak to this?
Misty's right there.
All right.
Put me to use. Uh, so this is a project that we go through every year about this time. Uh, this is a request to complete projects that weren't able to get done in 2022 as expected. Being able to carry over that budget authority and be able to complete them in 2023 instead. Um, so it's quite a bit of projects that are, that were delayed for a variety of reasons. That's about forty and a half million dollars of carryovers that are being requested. But of that amount, about thirty-nine million of it is for capital projects. Uh, this makes sense because a lot of the projects that we do are big projects that take multiple years or are replacement funds that accumulate funding up until then. Plus we've had some supply chain issues and some staff vacancies and some project delays um, that have made things especially, um, difficult to complete, kind of on the normal timeline. Uh, so about thirty-nine million of that is for capital projects and about one point four million is for operating things, um, which includes a variety of items. The full list is included in the packet along with the guidelines that talks about what items are considered appropriate for this process and the different steps that staff went through to make sure that these projects met those guidelines.
Any questions at all for Misty? Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
Misty, how, um, you know, there is a column called carryover requested. So, so how that amount is determined? You know, because some, sometime that amount differ from the amount that is in, the amount is in the recommended amount in the column, that column, you know, how do you, I don't understand that.
Yep, so included in the packet is the list of the guidelines. And it includes the criteria of what would be eligible for carryover. The biggest reason why things may have been requested but not approved, um, there's kind of three situations. One is it was something that wasn't actually budgeted for 2022. You need to have it budgeted in 2022 before you can carry it over to the next year. Um, the other big common one would be if they overspent their budget on that account line. There's no money to be carried over, so it would be reduced or eliminated for that. Or if the department overspent overall in their department, there wouldn't be money that would be available to carry over. So those are kind of the three main ones. And then sometimes just some corrections as, you know, bills come through and are paid and the timing between when they are requested and when this gets put forward.
Thank you.
Anything else at all? All right, seeing nothing else, then I guess we can go to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is unanimous and approved. All right, next one, Randy?
Uh, motion to approve Resolution R dash four, six, dash two, three, approving a TIF development agreement between Arlo Apartments LLC and the city of Fitchburg.
Second.
Sent it by Jay. And I don't know, did you wanna say, I don't have anything, you didn't send, turn in a sheet. I don't know if you wanted to say anything at all, Chris, at all about this. I wanted to just give you the chance. Yeah, that's fine, yeah, just fill out the form after you're done, if you want to. And I don't know, do you wanna speak to what this is, Randy, quick, or?
Well, I thought Chris would speak to it.
Yeah, all right.
Since he's here.
Evening, everybody, Chris Armstrong, fifty-eight oh three Auburn Drive, representing, uh, Arlo Apartments. Ha- happy to say that we are, we are a contributor to a handful of those buildings in TID four and, and, uh, it's a reminder to me that Mike's job doesn't happen overnight. Uh, economic development can take some time. But, uh, I'm here to talk to you today about, uh, uh, our project, um, uh, on East Cheryl called Arlo. Uh, I'll show you the location first. Um, it's right up against the tracks here. And, uh, you know, I, we, uh, I try to make a long story short. Uh, we built this, this, uh, Prima building, oh, maybe, um, six, eight years ago. And, uh, have run into quite a bit of issues related to, you know, what you see is a wetland that kind of cuts through here. And, uh, we've got, um, uh, poor soils and then, uh, water table issues where we have two pumps running nonstop. So when we went to design Arlo, our initial plan was to do a slab on grade project. Um, keep everything out of the, above the poor soils, uh, out of the water table. And, um, and, you know, with that came a lot of surface parking and about a five million dollar, uh, total value. Uh, talking to the city, we, we, uh, analyzed a more intense, aggressive project, um, with, uh, with some underground parking, trying to address some of the issues that we ran into at Prima. Really lifting that underground parking out, out of the groundwater, um, hauling away the poor soils. Um, and ending up with a, a fifteen million dollar project with, um, uh, fifty-seven units and, uh, some mixed use. So, uh, that, that's, uh, working with the city staff, um, financial analysis, engineering department to kind of go over what those extraordinary costs were to get us to that point. Uh, gets us to this, this TIF request that, um, and I think elders has looked at, uh, the city staff and engineers have looked at. Um, we're excited about the project. Uh, I got a rendering here as well. You know, one of the things that it does is it brings a, um, an amenity to, to Uptown, which is something that I know the neighborhood's been asking for quite a bit. It, uh, it also has an outdoor, uh, pavilion, music area, entertainment area and, uh, and a food truck hookup. So, uh, so we're trying to activate, uh, Uptown a little bit with this project. Um, so I, I think that's a, that's a bonus. And, uh, yeah, so, um, you know, that, that's, uh, that's why I'm here tonight to, um, you know, ask the city for some help in going with this, uh, this bigger, more intense, uh, higher, higher assessed project, so.
We will go into closed session, is there questions or comments before we do that for Chris at all?
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead, Julia.
Oh, okay. So, so my question to you, I, I read your, uh, geotechnical report. Um, and it mentioned that the water table are high there in that area. So are you experiencing any other issue in that area with the other apartment that you built? Because I don't think that is, you know, I assume in that this area, this issue is no particular to that small portion that, you know.
Yeah, in particular, that, that project right to the south, Prima, which was, you know, that kind of impetus for, for this design was that that project is in the water table and it's kind of along the same path. I, my, my like layman's analysis of this wetland is that before this tracks, it, it might've been quite contiguous through here. So, um, you know, this project in particular has, is quite a bit of the, the issues that we try, are trying to avoid with this more expensive design. So, um, it's really that, that, uh, mistakes we made at Prima, uh, that we're trying to correct here. Um, you know, through one of two solutions. One was a, a slab on grade project, which I don't think anyone was very excited about. But, uh, uh, you know, this more expensive, uh, lifting everything up, up above the water table and getting rid of the poor soil, so. Is that?
And then Jay, go ahead, Randy.
The, uh, with the dollar amount you're requesting, I'm assuming that's going to correct also the de-watering, I mean, or the, the water issue altogether. I mean, I, I'm under the impression that at Prima, you're running pumps twenty-four, seven.
We, we are, we have, we have, we have pumps and backup pumps and, and, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's nonstop. So we're, we're, uh, I was, uh, when Dave was talking about his pumps filling up with sand, I was starting to have some nightmares about our basement filling up.
So, so with this particular funding, I mean, you're, you're, it should correct the, the water issue so that as far as penetrating to the, the parking levels or, or whatever the case may be. Or, or will you still have to pump afterwards as well? Or just not as?
Not, not as severely, because we're, really what we're trying to do is, is lift everything up above the water table. So, you know, so you'll see, um, well, you can't really see, but, but our, our parking structure is, is, uh, is exposed in the back. So, you know, we have, we have deck parking, um, that, that's really, you know, half, half in the ground and half maybe two third, oh, two thirds above the ground, one third in the ground.
So are, with your construction now, I noticed you're out digging, are you de-watering as well? I mean, at this point in time, or is because of the winter, you just don't have that, that flow of water through of it?
Yeah, well, I, because of where we set it, we've tried to keep everything above. So there's, there's a one corner that we have some de-watering issues, uh, that we're sensitive to. Um, you know, and, uh, for the most part, it's been pretty good so far, so. Uh, I think it's because we dug a pretty shallow hole where across the street, we dug a much deeper hole.
I see, okay, thank you.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, with, at Prima, are you, um, where's that water being pumped to?
I don't know, I don't know. Yeah.
Like into the stormwater system or is it leaving the area?
I really don't know the answer to that question.
I would like to know the answer to that question.
Okay.
You can send it to me later.
Yeah.
The, the only other question I really, well, first of all, when you and I chatted about this, and one of the questions I had is, was there, is there a way to eliminate all those stairways on the, the Cheryl Drive side of the building and probably on Stanley Park as well? And just put a ramp so that it can be more ADA and have a, have a better appearance than with all those stairways?
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you have a chance to look into that at all?
I, I did, and we're, we're just past the point of, of hundred percent complete design to, to do that. Um, so, I mean, we're, not on this one, but we did talk about the idea and we're like, that's, that's something we could consider in other projects that face this type of issue. So, um, it's just where, where it's gotten past contractor point of, uh, of no return.
I see. All right.
Other questions, Julia?
So what happened if, um, this body doesn't, um, go forward with the TIF request? What is the final design for that?
You know, we're, we're moving, we're moving ahead. I think that probably some of the casualty will be in the, you know, the public amenity. So, um, you know, and we're gonna have to, it's gonna be a, um, you know, I, I think we got, we got into it, uh, um, looking for this assistance, working with the city staff and, you know, felt like this was a, a good, uh, win-win situation for both. But for some reason, this falls through. I mean, we're gonna have to, to plow ahead with something and, you know, the, it's kind of the, you know, I'd imagine the casualty will be on this, this public amenity piece, which is the, you know, the outdoor, uh, kind of gathering area.
So are you planning to remove the retail section? Is it what you are looking, you are gonna do? I don't understand what you are gonna remove when you said. The retail, you know, you have retail there, can you put it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that. But, you know, we've got this outdoor area that's got an outdoor, uh, uh, pavilion, uh, music area, uh, entertainment area, you know, the food truck, I don't know. Uh, we don't really have a plan for that, I'm hoping that we don't have to have a plan for that.
But the, can I have a follow up? So, but the, the final design is gonna look like that without the public area?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, that, we're, we're kind of at, at that point of no return. So, you know, we're moving ahead and, and, um, you know, I think in good faith, we, we've been working with the city since, um, you know, early December on this concept. So, uh, sharing engineering reports and financial analysis and, um, you know, I mean, I guess anything's possible, we'll just have to, you know, if this doesn't come through, we're gonna have to, you know, find the seven hundred eighty K somewhere. So it's just gonna, you know, have to, um, I don't know, we're hoping not to have to deal with that. But if we do, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll have to figure it out whether it's, you know, more money in from our end or, or, uh, you know, cost saving somewhere else, so.
I drove by and you've actually already started work, haven't you? There's fence up, it's looked like you scraped everything off.
Yeah, we got the, we got the foundation going, yeah.
Anything else for now? All right.
Hole in the ground, yeah.
Okay, great. Then, uh, does someone want to move to go into closed session? You have to read the whole thing.
Sure, I'll, I'll continue here.
All right.
Motion to go into, into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen dot eight, five, one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Consideration of approving a TIF development agreement between Arlo Apartments LLC and the city of Fitchburg.
Second.
Sent it by Jay. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. For people online, we'll have Fact TV put you in the waiting room and we will bring you back when we are ready on the sun.
I just texted her.
Yeah, so did I. All right, we're good online, all right. Uh, Jay, do you wanna do a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to go back into open session.
Second.
Sent it by Randy, all in favor of reconveni- open session, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, we are back in open session. Any comments, uh, further questions, anything like that?
I can't hear you guys.
You can't hear us? You can hear us or you can't? Oh, you must be able to know. You're, you're here answering me? Thumbs up. Uh-oh.
Can you hear us, Tracy?
Yeah, Tracy can. Uh-oh.
Somebody typed to her in the Zoom that she changed her microphone tag.
Oh, now can you? Still can't hear us? So I guess that's just mic on and off, not?
Yeah, we can't tell if she, if her speakers are on or off.
I guess we could, yeah. Well, I think we heard her for a second when she had her mic off, but she can't hear us, which is the speaker. I don't know why she would've changed it, but. Got the cartridge blown, it's, the cartridge back in. I know, you knew it though. Barely. She might have to log out and back in, I don't know if there's the same link to work.
Shannon, can you hear me on Zoom?
Nope.
Yeah, she said she can't hear anything. She can't hear me or the chambers.
Can she, can you type Chad to her to jump off and jump back in? Oh, okay. Good time for a bio break, if you need a bio break?
Are Scott and Tim actually there? There's Scott. He woke up.
Badgers are up 5846. Twelve minutes to go.
All right. All right. Please hold for technical difficulties. On the motion. Yeah, we'll wait to vote until she gets.
Yeah, but we should have Chris come up here and chat with us for a minute.
Do you have some questions? All right, come on up, Chris. We have some questions for you. Go ahead.
So one of the questions that we were pondering is this outdoor area, is that going to be fenced or locked up in any way?
Well, it's gonna go through a liquor license permitting. So, you know, I think that we've proposed a landscape barrier. But I think it's kind of what the public or the liquor license request is gonna dictate there. So it's in a vision triangle.
Complication, doesn't it?
It does.
One of the things that we were concerned about is if we're going through this process in order to create this public amenity, we'd like it to be accessible to the public, more or less at all times. So the question is, how can we make that happen?
Well, I mean, I think that that was an idea on the front end of the project and I think that it was city staff that really wanted, didn't want to have the liability for that public amenity. So, you know, right now.
Well, I mean, obviously it would be owned by you or owned by Scott or owned by some LLC somewhere. But having it as a public amenity where people could use it without having to, you know, go through the bar or anything like that. How do we do that? I mean, because we do that for other events.
Well, for something like Ves Italian, they do have temporary fencing.
Well, they do, but like when we do concerts at McKee, we don't necessarily fence that whole area.
No, we don't fence anything.
Where's our city clerk? Can you, city clerk, can you explain that to us?
Or Valerie, I don't know if you would have any insight into it.
I mean, I can tell you, our plan is, it sits here today. We, you know, our tenant, who just signed the lease, so.
Yay.
He's committed to the project and the name of the establishment's gonna be the Thirsty Bee Lounge. It's Hawk from Atomic Koi, so he's gonna have a second location in Pittsburgh. And, you know, we're counting on his acumen for the entertainment community to drive events and so we're gonna be tapping into him to be booking that pavilion as much as possible and the food truck. So I think, you know, he's obviously incented to keep that place as active as he can with a variety of events. But that's, so that's how we're, that's how we've decided, you know, try to maximize its use by charging him with that. But if there was a way that, you know, that city group wanted to take advantage of that, I mean, you know, I think we could brainstorm on how they could get in there.
Well, I think there's also some concerns about the vision, being able to see that vision triangle. So you wouldn't be able to have too much that's actually blocking the view up to the tracks, right?
Right, right. So that was what, actually, within Smart Code, you couldn't have this outdoor area but for this vision triangle. So it left us kind of this open square, which we've decided to turf to, you know, one, percolate as much water as we can and two, get more of a, you know, pick up a month or two on either end of the season. So.
Joe?
Is this intended to be like an adult establishment of the bee line?
Oh, the Rusty Bee.
Rusty Bee. Is it, I mean, my main question is for this outdoor area is like this place, it's for grownups or is like a place that people can bring their?
You know, I've heard Hawk talk about movie nights and, you know, I mean, obviously the live music, but, you know, so he's gonna be in charge of programming, but, you know, I've heard him talk about it. It's not just a, you know, live music event, you know, based on how he's described it to me.
Do you know what the square footage of Atomic Koi is?
It's about the same as the interior space. So 2200 over there, this will have, you know, that inside and out. So, I mean, you know, this was really a COVID-born project when there was just a lot more interest in outdoor space and gathering space. So we were trying to figure out a way to take advantage of this vision triangle. But you're right, you can't have anything over, I think, 42 inches in terms of a permanent obstruction there for the track. So that's why it was a great outdoor, like, you know, lawn area for people to gather in front of the pavilion was how we were gonna maximize that kind of dead corner to us.
Can I answer your question, Joe?
Yeah. I'm just thinking, when I'm thinking of public, I'm also thinking of like, you know, who's all included in that public, whether it's just like an adult establishment or something for everybody.
Any other questions at all, comments? An amendment at all? I don't know if people want to do an amendment on anything. Not seen anything. So Tracy, let's do a roll call just to be sure, if you don't mind.
Sure. Alder Ellen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhard?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman? Aye. Alder Udell?
Aye.
Oshkere?
All right, great.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
All right. We can move on to Personnel Committee.
We met back on March 8th. And in addition to that resolution that we looked at earlier, we also talked about the bilingual pay incentive. And I believe you got an email, but the 13 staff passed, they were all in Spanish. And so that's our first batch of, we talked a little bit about potentially getting these individuals on the website, making it clear that there are people that they can, that people, that the public can speak to in Spanish. Maybe a sign at the front desk when Carla's available at reception to have conversations in Spanish. But yeah, it's exciting first step. Hopefully we can get more city members certified in different languages in the future. And for the public that doesn't understand, that doesn't know, they will receive a 50% per hour pay bump. 50 cents. 50%. Thank you for just, yes, no. 50 cent per hour pay bump with that certification. And they have to go through a process in order to get that. So yeah, 13 staff members. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Public safety, anything there?
We approved 12 new operators licenses tonight and also approved a liquor license for a new, it's gonna be a wine tasting bar or whatever over in Terabessa. So it'd be kind of something new over there besides homes. So they had kind of a unique way to test the wine. So once they get up and running, I'd encourage you to visit it. That's all.
They own the place in Oregon?
They own a place in Oregon, yeah. I know both. I know the husband and wife. They belong to my health club. I didn't realize they owned the place in Oregon until I saw them tonight and put two and two together. Nice people.
Yes, they are. All right, unfinished business. Does someone want to make a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I can move approval of ordinance 2023-0-05, authorizing remote electronic or virtual meetings by amending chapter 4 to create section 4-70 of the Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances. Second.
Sent by Gabriella. And yeah, this is just kind of formalizing what we've been doing for quite a long time, actually, with COVID. And so we won't have to just kind of redo it or re-prove it every three or six months going forward. Any questions or comments? I feel like hopefully I got into things that you, we talked about in the past. Julia?
Yeah, so I review this and, you know, in the section two, when we talk about an A, section two A, I think the language is too rigid. You know, it says mayor and elders may occasionally participate in common council and standing committee meetings remotely. May, you know, occasionally, with the suggested guideline of one remote appearance per quarter in the absence of extenuating circumstances or hardship. So I found out there is no true, I don't think that that one was what, when we discussed this way back, I thought that these ordinance will be more, you know, there is more flexibility. So, and I found kind of like very rigid the language and, you know, so we can participate only one time remotely as a council member.
So I guess I.
I don't know. I would like to see more, there should be more fluid, more open, you know what I mean?
I guess it was written to actually have that flexibility in there where you, there's the suggested guideline. You can do more. Things happen. If you get sick, you get COVID. You're up in Canada ice fishing, that you can do that. And there's actually nothing in here that says if you are remote two times or three times, like, nothing happens. I think that the idea is we prefer people to be here in person. We know there's reasons why people can't, whether it's childcare, Canada, whatever it might be. And I think it's, you know, more of if someone is never in person, then the council at that point in time can decide, okay, this is not what we intended and we don't like your reasons why, I guess. I mean, if there's legitimate reasons why, like, it's fine, no big deal. But if the council at some point feels like, okay, someone's abusing this and it's not appropriate for whatever reason, then at that point in time, the council would kind of police ourselves, I guess. And there's no like punishment in here if you're doing it more often. Gabriella, do you want to speak more to that?
So this was drafted to reflect the request to kind of codify that there is a benefit to mayor and elders appearing generally in person, but also to have flexibility to allow remote appearances. As Aaron said, that's why the language of suggested guidelines employed. So in other words, that's a suggested guideline and certainly this language is open to changes as this body sees fit. But my intention was to, at the request of the mayor, to both create kind of a framework, but also to allow flexibility for elders to do something different without opening the door to, say, somebody who didn't like the act of the council to then challenge that act on the basis that it was somehow done improperly because of this, of one or more members appearing remotely. And so that's why that language is in there. And the other thing I added also is extenuating circumstances and hardships. So as discussed with the mayor and his request, this is basically the idea that once per quarter is sort of a convenience factor, but then if you have extenuating circumstances or other hardships, that that would be a separate reason why the older people would appear remotely.
Okay, so I understand, but that language is kind of extreme, you know what I mean? Because we need to, what does it mean, what are those hardship circumstances? It could be different for each people, you know what I mean? Like, so I think when we were thinking more to move some of this session remotely, I was thinking more like, you know, not to have this hardship language, you know what I mean? May occasionally, for me, sounds like, you know, it doesn't sound like I can, you know, do more of my meeting remotely, you know? It's kind of like you can maybe do one, but you had to be, you had to be a very good excuse, you know what I mean? So that one is the language that I have issue, you know what I mean? Like, I would like to see more open language, more, you know, it's too rigid for my taste.
Gabriel?
I just wanted to comment, so like, extenuating circumstances or hardship? So I'm trying to figure out like what, precisely what that means in terms of, you know, in terms of Alder Radifrada's concern. So sickness would be a hardship.
Childcare.
Childcare, okay, that would be considered a hardship. You couldn't get childcare. And then like if you happen to be traveling for work and you're out of town, extenuating circumstance, that's the kind of situations that would be included by this language lately? That's the intention, exactly. Okay.
I don't anticipate anybody's gonna be keeping track. I think where the issues are gonna come in is what Valerie's mentioned, is if a member of this body appears exclusively remotely or 80, 90% of the time, they're always remote. I think that's where the language in this proposed ordinance is trying to avoid those sorts of situations. I think it is written well enough to allow the flexibility based on the word hardship and extenuating circumstances. Those have very broad definitions, I think, in a lot of circles and are open to interpretation, which is the very point.
For example, though, if someone like Representative Jimmy Anderson was locked at the council and he has, he's, you know, in a wheelchair, it's difficult sometimes. I think maybe it might be difficult for him to get to meetings, then maybe he would be online 89% of the time, but that's hardship. That's extenuating circumstances because that, again, I don't think you want to list out everything because you're never gonna get the whole list. That's gonna be a problem. That's why it's kind of this vague, you know, extenuating circumstances. It's meant to be pretty wishy-washy, frankly. I mean, this one's not going to, I would hope someone isn't, you missed two meetings this quarter and two meetings last quarter and you should resign. That seems ridiculous to me. But Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a hill I'll die on, but I just don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think ultimately, you know, you know, it'll likely be mostly at the cost to, you know, one of the members of the council or if they choose to take most of their meetings remotely without extenuating circumstances versus a cost to the public. And I just personally don't see this clause as necessary. I think we should just be able to kind of take our own discretion and I really, I don't think we should necessarily, as a council, be policing one another in our, whether or not we appear if we're doing the business of council. If we're reading our packets, we're voting. whether or not we appear, if we're doing the business of council, if we're reading our packets, we're voting, we're, you know, doing our due diligence, doing outreach to our constituents. Whether or not we appear, appear remotely, I think should really just be up to the discretion of each of us. And I know that may not be a popular opinion, but I, I don't, I don't know, I just, Madison's been going remotely longer than us and, you know, I think they're just as engaged, if not more. So I just, I just don't see the necessity of defining a guideline of how often we should appear remotely. It just seems like excessive.
So maybe I am confused because when we discussed that previously, I thought that we are gonna go hybrid. You know, that you can, you can have the option if you want to participate remotely most of your meeting, you know what I mean? So I thought that we were going through that route, you know what I mean? Not like, the way may occasionally for me, maybe I am translating correctly, but you know, I have this two-word in my vocabulary. It means like, I should participate remotely minimum of my meetings, you know what I mean? It shouldn't be, allow me to participate most of the time remotely, you know what I mean? So that one is my struggle with the, and the same with the 2B, when they say, for some of the members, they say, may participate in meeting remotely. So may participate means like, yeah, you can participate, but we don't recommend that. This is how that may sounds. This is how I interpret this, you know what I mean? So, so my question is, this is why I have the confusion because I thought that when we discussed this in the past, it was, we are gonna, people, if people want to participate remotely most of the time, it's okay. But it's not that where, where you want to take that ordinance, maybe I missed something.
And just to clarify, for A, that's just the council, B would be other boards? Oh, all right.
And 2B, when I read that may participate for some members, for member of the city board, it sounds, for me, it sounds like, you may participate, but we don't recommend that, you know what I mean? Because that may sounds like, yeah, you may, you know what I mean?
So, so if I may address that point, I, I can't speak to the policy call in, in, in sub A. I think that's for this body to consider and to set your own framework. But as far as what the word may means in sub B and really generally in stetched interpretation, it just means is permitted. So in other words, shall means you have to, and may means you can if you want to. So members of, that, that just means that members can participate remotely? Right. If it said shall participate remotely, that would mean nobody could attend in person, and all our meetings would be entirely virtual. So may just means are permitted to. It, it doesn't really create presumption one way or the other, it just, it is an allowance, if you will. So if, if we use words such as shall, then there would be no in-person attendance permitted.
Participate. What about can?
That's just not traditionally linked that we use in ordinances. We use, we say may or shall as opposed to can.
I wonder if, if we remove the word occasionally, that might clarify. So mayor and elders may participate in common council meetings with suggested guideline of one remote appearance per quarter in the absence of extenuating circumstances or hardship that's interpreted rather broadly. So occasionally, if you remove that, then it's just, the statement that they may participate remotely is kind of the primary statement, and then there's some guidance and, and, you know, exceptions laid out. I, I wonder if that goes a, a, a long way towards solving the-
Much better if, yeah, removing the occasionally.
So I'll make a motion to remove the word occasionally from section 2A.
Second amendment.
All right, sent by Dave. So to amend 2A to delete the word occasionally, any thoughts, comments on that one? Seeing none. We'll vote on removing the word occasionally, so it's just on the word occasionally. All in favor of removing the word occasionally? Say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, the word occasionally is out. Anything further?
Yes, I would like to remove the one remote appearance per quarter. We shouldn't have that.
What's that, what's that amendment? Okay, that's seconded by Joe. All right, so was this suggested? Well, I think, you, you just want to end the sentence at the word remotely, then? Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I want to make sure it reads accurately, so.
I don't know, you Valerie, want to keep the, the ex 2018 circumstances or hardship. I don't know, you want to keep that in that or no? I don't know.
I don't think you need it.
No.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So if I understand correctly, your amendment is to end the sentence at the word remotely, the period instead of a comma, and delete the rest of that sentence. So the mayor's and older will participate, may participate in common council and standing committee meetings remotely. Remote appearances under this section, so it'll be subject to section 4-73. Does that sound good?
Yes.
All right, and Joe, you're okay with that?
Yes.
All right, thoughts on that? Comments on that? Seeing none. All in favor of making that change? Say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, so that sentence is much shorter now. Gabrielle?
Just one comment. I, I do think that's great that we make it very clear that board, board members or commission members can attend remotely all the time. I've heard from board members that it just makes it more possible for them to participate, and bringing more people in is better. So I, I do like that there's a real broad interpretation for those. Just wanted to note that, I appreciated that part of the, the ordinance.
All right, any other questions or comments on the changed motion? Jay?
Yeah, something that doesn't really come up is that under Wisconsin statute, the, our, our council can vote to remove a member from the common council. It takes a three-quarters of vote, and it's, the circumstances under which in the statute are kind of broad, but they deal with things like malfeasance in office and neglect of duty and things like that. I don't, you know, I know that we've had a lot of hand wringing about whether people can attend remotely or not. And I think if council members are making an effort to participate, just, you know, even if they can't be here physically, if they are making an effort, if they're logging in, if they're coming in, they're doing like Shannon did where they sat out through the whole closed session, and now she's back. I mean, there's, that's not neglect of duty by any stretch of, of, of the definition. So I think these changes we're making are good changes. And, you know, I, I think obviously we would hope that people would be attending in person, but if they aren't, you know, that's really up to the voters of their district to decide whether that's the representation they want. And, you know, let the, let the voters have that decision. It's not really up to us to regulate that in the form of an ordinance.
Any other counts at all? All right, seeing none. We can go ahead and vote on the amended ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, then that passes. All right. Now, on to the ARPA-TID. Randy, do you want to do this resolution?
Yes, motion to approve resolution R-22-23 adopting the 2023 update to the ARPA-TID closure investment plan.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and Misty, do you want to kick us off?
Yes. So out on the city's website is the packet of the council proposed amendments to the investment plan. I will start by reminding you that this is money that was funded through the ARPA funds that we received from the federal government, 3.2 million. And then the excess increment from TID 6 and TID 4 that are very unusual, one-time kind of circumstances. So this investment plan was taking all of the bunch of different things that we could do with this money and narrowed the scope to the things that council would like us to focus on as ideas for the use of that money. But this is, as Julia best described it, it's a wish list, right? This, this is not, once it's approved tonight, permission for staff for projects to be implemented. This is just the list of the different things that you want staff to work on as a possible use of this money. Still has to go through CIP and still has to go through budget. So the mayor had his proposal. We had a public hearing on that. We had the special finance committee meeting. Council submitted their amendments. There are five of them for you to consider tonight. We'll go one by one, just like we do for the CIP and budget process. You're welcome to make amendments to the amendment if you so wish. At the end, then, we need to adopt the resolution adopting the investment plan, though I do have one amendment to the resolution that I'm hoping council will support, and that Randy will help me lead. And then we'll be done with this process for this year.
All right, sounds good. So I think, like we've done in the past, we can just go down the list here and have, do we need, probably a motion on each individual amendment then, right?
I would, yep.
Yeah, Gabrielle, do you want to do yours first?
Yeah, let me just pull up right here. I move approval of amendment number one, startup funding for community gravel beds.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and you want to speak to this?
Yeah, just restoring, we, we actually added this last year with the same council added this. I think maybe there was a slight misunderstanding, but this is a one-time project. It's really just the funding to get the community gravel bed set up. And since that was a long conversation ago, just as a reminder, the gravel beds are, are for the trees. They're a strategy to kind of plant bare root trees, allow the root beds to grow really in a healthy way over the course of the summer. Then you pull those trees out, you plant them, you're much more likely to, for that tree to survive and be a healthy tree going forward. It also allows us to buy bare root trees instead of bald and burlap trees, which are significantly less, less expensive. Sometimes a quarter is, a quarter of the expense of a bald and burlap tree. And then also, there are certain species of trees that you cannot buy in the format we buy trees now. So you can only buy them bare root. So it allows us to add these types of trees that we wouldn't be able to buy otherwise, except in the, in the community gravel bed. And I included a link here from the DNR, the Wisconsin DNR about gravel beds. And they specifically call out two communities in Wisconsin that are currently using the, the gravel beds effectively. And so if, at one, at the point that we might include this, I would imagine that we'd go visit and kind of check it out. But this, a deal was originally brought to the Tree Advisor Committee by Anna Healy, our forester. She thought it was a, a potentially good idea. I think it's something that should stay on the table as a possibility, and so I brought it back for consideration.
All right, comments, questions? I guess mine is just, and the reason I took it out is because I don't understand why it wouldn't be a one-time cost because you're, you're still buying trees, I don't, maybe fertilize it, water. Staff is gonna have to, some staff would probably have to go attend to them. And my understanding, the bare root trees, I've seen I planted hundreds of them, is they're usually about this big, and they kind of look like sticks, and by the end of the summer, there's some tiny leaves on it. And I just know that we've had complaints from citizens about the trees that we do plant, which are like five feet tall and like five years old. And I know the condos over on the corner of Salmon and Omecky Road, they complained about those trees and wanted those to be bigger. So maybe I'm, my, my experience with bare root trees is that they're pretty small.
That's not my understanding. And, and I, and I take my cues from, from Anna. She presented this at Tree Advisory, and she thought it was a potential good strategy for the city. This doesn't mean that every single tree we buy will go through this process. It would be probably a much smaller scale, although with the potential to expand it over time. But the cost savings would allow us to have some more flexibility in terms of, in terms of being able to buy potentially more trees or maybe invest in, in other aspects of this. So I don't know, I, I think the program has yet to be decided exactly how it runs. But I think ultimately, based on what I've read about community gravel beds and what the direction I've seen, is that it is a cost-saving measure long-term, and it improves the tree stock in the community. So, like I said, I'm not an expert, but I, I take my cues from, from Anna and from the Wisconsin DNR.
I have a question. Maybe we can plant those trees in medians, you know, because they don't, you know, they are so small, you know what I mean? Like you say that, how, how tall are usually?
The ones I'm familiar with are about a foot tall.
I don't know.
That's-
If, we don't put it in development or, you know, which other places we can plant this tree because of the size, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that Tree Advisory Committee would weigh in on, on what this looks like. And I don't think this is gonna happen next year. I'm gonna put it into the CIP this year and kind of put it on a time horizon. But I, ultimately, I just would like it to stay on the table as a possibility. I don't, I think it's a potentially good source of funding, and it's, I put in 35,000. I don't actually think it would even cost that much. I just kind of threw in a, a number. And I, it's really a drop in the bucket compared to the other projects in this, and I, I think it should be on the table.
Yeah, I mean, I just did a quick Google search just to see what bare root trees are. And based on the images I'm seeing, that's, they are, they're like this big, you know, roughly this big. So that's what a bare root tree is.
Well, if you'll let me, I can show you a picture from the, from the, hang on, let me share my screen. Can I share my screen?
Yep, yeah, thumbs up.
I'm pulling up here a guide, all you can need to know about community gravel beds. So this is kind of what they look like. You can see a person standing there for scale. No, no, they're trees. You, you buy them as trees. So I mean, I imagine that there's kind of variety, but that's what you, before and after in terms of the, the bed.
And I think that's what you buy, pretty small. And I think after a few years, that's what you see up above.
Well, no, this, this is, this is before bare root stock, after is 14 weeks in a gravel bed. So it's, it's a horizontal comparison.
Right, but the roots are definitely bigger, but the, the tree itself is, looks like a stick. It's not a stick, but it looks like a stick.
I mean, you're talking about this, but that's, that's what we-
That's eventually what it becomes. That's not what's in the picture, though.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure that this is a tree that came out of the community gravel bed and put, planted into the ground.
After like four or five years, though, I think.
No, it's an annual process. So you put them in in the spring, and you pull them out in the fall.
Dave, I think you have some experience with it as well, it looks like, based on your comments. I, I don't-
Really fast.
I, I think they're just, I'm just saying from my experience, because we, because my, so my cousin and my uncle both own tree farms, and they bought, buy hundreds of trees from the DNR. And that, what they get is what you see in the smaller picture, pretty small. They eventually get that big. My uncle's tree farm is 30 years old now, and trees are huge, and he gets a thin amount. Eventually, they do get to that size, but that's not a year.
Yeah, but I'm, this is not every single tree that would be being planted in the city. It's a small subset. And maybe we only use it to plant tree species that we can't buy in, in another format. I don't know exactly how the program would work yet, and that's, that's, I don't think the intention of these amendments is to have all the details figured out. But I'd be eager to kind of have Anna investigate this and see if it's a possibility. And like I said, I, you know, obviously, there are things that need to be worked out, but I do think it's, it's worth keeping it on the table for potential funding.
Dave?
Scott wants to reach out. I can stop sharing my screen.
I'll go Dave first, then I'll come to Scott. Just second Scott.
Gabrielle, what I, what I would prefer is, you know, we buy the bare stock trees. We ask residents to raise them in their yards and, and, you know, as a community effort, you know, that these are gonna be trees going for a community. We ask them to do this in their, in their yard, and then city doesn't have to spend any money, you know, maintaining or anything. You know, when they're, when they're ready, you know, they dig them out and, and the city can, city can plant them. That would be my, that'd be my vision, you know?
Scott, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, maybe just as a, a bit of clarification, you can, you can certainly purchase, you know, one and a half, one and three-quarter inch diameter inch bare root trees, which typically what you could do, and then you, it's really kind of an incubator for the roots to grow more vibrantly so that when they are transplanted, they, they tend to be more successful. But you certainly, you buy, you buy a one and a half or a one and three-quarter inch diameter tree that is bare root instead of bald and burlapped, and then the, the tree roots grow in, in the gravel bed, and then you transplant them in the fall. So it, it isn't a case of, the, the tree isn't adding girth or height. You purchase the trees that are that size, it's just a matter of it enhances the root growth, which in turn, you're more successful in the, in the transplant, transplanting of that tree.
Yeah, and just response to Dave, I, I actually believe that when these, I think the reason that they call them community gravel beds is they typically are a community effort where, wherever the, wherever it's located in the city, it's typically managed by volunteers. And having met a lot of the tree volunteers in this community at tree plantings, there is a very active tree community. there is a very active tree community here that are advocates that I'm certain would be interested in this type of project. So I feel confident that we could have a lot of volunteer help on this type of project.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing none, then we can go ahead and vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, I believe the ayes. I believe the ayes still have it, though. All right, number two, Julia.
Approval of the city motion, the forward vision and strategy 3.0 update.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, and you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this amendment is to fund for around $25,000 for an update for the city motion, a strategy vision plan. I don't know if you have seen this, you know? So this plan was put in place in 2018. It took like a year and a half to develop. I was the co-chair when we did that. Most of the strategy... This is a strategic vision for economic development for the city. Most of this has been accomplished or they are rolling out right now. So the idea is that, you know, I talked to Mike, and I think this is time for, to have a refresh of the plan and to set the next set of strategies for the next five to 10 years. So the idea is to roll this program, maybe to update this process in the spring or summer of 2024. And $25,000 is not going to be enough, but then we talk about from which other sources, funding sources, we can get more funding, and we can use some tax incremental district because most of the economic development that we are applying is for our biggest... Sometimes we talk about our corridors, or also we talk about tax incremental district. So that's it. This is the idea, to have a refresh. I think it's a great plan.
Yeah, what would be the total cost of this?
It's $25,000. Go ahead, Mike.
When we did this plan, it was over $100,000, but we're not looking to do a full-blown update. I think we're looking to do a refresh of it because some of these visions and strategic objectives are still relevant, like building places and spaces along the main corridors. So if you look at the strategic framework with the action items, and then kind of the intent would be to piggyback on the two neighborhood plans that we're doing, South Stone and Prairie and Greenfield, that would incorporate and kind of inform maybe some updates to these strategic directives. So it wouldn't be a full-blown kind of refresh, but we would use the 25, probably go and get some from one or two of the TID districts around the city. And then probably also, the chamber was a partner with us on this last one. So we would kind of, you know, put the money or package the money to get us a product that we want. But it's not going to be a full-blown update, just more of a refresh.
So that was a lot of words without an answer to the question that I...
Oh, well, the previous one, I think I said was $100,000.
Right, you said we're not going to do that.
Right.
So how much is this... How much would this cost roughly?
I'm just kind of estimating. I'm hoping we can get it done for 50.
Okay. So would the 25, the other 25,000, would that be a rational TID-eligible expense? Misty?
So we'd have to make sure it's included in the project plan. But then if it is, and you can say that it's because of the TID, we've done it in the past. We just have to make sure our documents are aligned.
Would anti-drive be involved in this, or would that be sort of later?
That would be involved as well, because we've got the three TID... Two TID districts that we're creating, plus an amendment with TID-10 this year. So in those project plans, we would probably include narrative in the project plan as a project cost item, you know, in those project plans for it. And I think one of the big themes of this one will continue to be kind of redevelopment, reinvestment, revitalization across those three TID districts as a primary point of emphasis in strategic directive.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just one. I had never heard of this plan until Julia came up with this because I wasn't on the council when this was done. So this was new to me. So is this available somewhere to download?
Yes, if you go to the economic development page on the website and go to resources, I think it's under, or documents there, there's a link with the whole plan on there. And you know, Jay, this was the second one that we did. There was an earlier version, too, which was the original. So this is 2.0.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, before we do number three, I think we're going to need to extend the meeting at least half an hour.
So moved.
Second.
By Jay, signed by... I'll give it to Joe. All in favor extending the meeting for 30 minutes, say aye.
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 Anna, opposed, nay? All right, we are extended. All right, Joe, go ahead.
Sure. This amendment was proposed by the bike committee. The last update to the bike and ped plan was in 2017. There's a lot going on in terms of cycling. You know, the B-cycle project, Pittsburgh going for gold status. I think a lot of that work is really due to volunteers, you know, on the committee as well as the Pittsburgh Chamber and corporate partners. But I think, you know, we're overdue for an updated bike and pedestrian plan. So this amount was sort of estimated by the committee in addition to staff. So it's pretty straightforward. I'll take any questions if folks have them.
I agree with you that the plan needs to be updated. Could we do it with an ad hoc? You know, we know, we have the old plan. We have very knowledgeable people. We do with an ad hoc, so we don't have to, you know, pay a consultant to do what our people in the city know already, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a whole lot of staffing support in the city. I mean, there's, you know, one staff member that splits his time between this and, you know, other sustainability measures. You know, we have sort of people on the committee that love biking, but I think this makes sense to, you know, consult a professional to do.
Quick question. Who did it? Who seconded this again? I just need to let Tracy know. Do we have a second on this? Randy? All right, Randy seconded, sorry. All right, any questions for Joe, comments? Seeing none, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Next, Julia.
Approval of the neighborhood hub and adjoining parcel stormwater improvements.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, and you want to speak to this?
I'm going to ask Chad to speak.
Thank you, Alder. So I had spoken with Alder Radifra in regards to this amendment. Obviously, you're all aware of the hub project that is in the design process for the north side of Traceway Drive about mid-block to the west of Fish Hatchery Road. We have learned through the design process of a few easements that we weren't necessarily aware of when that parcel was dedicated to the city. There's a partial easement for a parking lot. There was a storm sewer pipe within the middle of the parcel. And then there's also a portion of the northern parking lot from, I think, 2201 Post Road with a stormwater inlet and a street light and some pavement that's also has a partial easement on this particular parcel that the city owns. Staff, and in particular legal, has a concern about private easements within public parkland. And we're trying to work collaboratively with Plesco in order to address their private stormwater and ideally rerouting it off of the public parkland in the hub parcel. We think that that's going to clearly require some city investment in order to make that happen. Clearly, we're going to need to be more than likely responsible for removing the Plesco private easements or the items that are part of those private easements. That's going to take some money to do that. And then we also may need to explore some cost sharing with Plesco in order to really redirect that stormwater so that it stays on the Plesco parcels that adjoining the hub parcel.
And that will probably not be enough money, but we can change the amount later if we want to make sure that the project was leased in there. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next one is Randy.
All right, motion to approve amendment number five, add funding for speed feedback boards.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and you want to speak to this, Randy?
Yes, I'm requesting eight speed feedback boards for a citywide public safety initiative. Two speed boards would be designated for each Aldermatic district. Cost of $5,000, depending on where it's located, installation costs, et cetera. $1,000 per sign for poles, if necessary. But the investment is expected to improve traffic safety throughout the city. I've talked to a number of Alders, and there's always the issue of traffic issues. And sometimes we feel frustrated that we're not able to resolve some of those issues for the residents, because when we do reach out to the city, there are legitimate data that doesn't support some type of measure. And I've used the speed feedback boards in the past, Seminole Forest area. Recently, we used them for the Sine Road project, even though that was kind of after the fact, if that's even the cause. But I have some additional information as far as a justification, and it came from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration that 87% of the speeding-related traffic fatalities occur on local roads. And then just two to four miles per hour slower, estimated across all vehicle types, reduces speed and fatalities. The reduction in speed reduces the fatalities. So I would request that you support this amendment.
Just a clarifying question. Are these the ones you move around, or are these the permanent ones?
No, these are permanent. So there would be no management in the sense of from the police department.
So like the ones you see on Lacy Road when you're going down from Seminole? Okay.
Yeah, Lacy or in Seminole. Solar power-driven.
Thanks.
Joe?
So do you see these in like sort of major busier streets? Or like where would you put one in District Four?
District Four could be on Osmondson. That's been going on forever since I've lived there. There's been issues with speed. And when I was knocking doors the other day, it can be an issue. I feel for the residents on that particular stretch. Another one is Sine. I mean, I don't know how many times I've driven through Sine from north to south or south to north, there's somebody tailgating me, you know, and I'm going the speed limit. So... And I hear that often from residents on Sine. I mean, those are just two examples, yeah.
Where, you know, I know you're asking different Alders, but where do you envision it in a more densely populated area?
Well, I'm going to... Yeah.
What kind of a street would you see it being put on?
I'm going to leave that up to the alder, I suppose, if you have a certain area. Sure, that would probably be a prime example, yeah. We could all come up with an area that's... Where residents are always reaching out and stating, "Speed, speed." What are you going to do about it?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay? All right, that one is approved. So now we have to go back and approve the whole slate that we just approved, correct? But Misty, I know you've got an amendment that you need to make to the amendment, or the motion, I mean.
Yeah, first, I'd like to give you some numbers, if I may. So the original mayor's proposal investment plan was a little over $10 million. Tonight, we added about just under $200,000. There's $8.8 million in available funding. So if you look at all the projects that have been approved in this investment plan, we're about $1.4 million more in projects than the money that's available. And that's okay. That's by design. This is our wish list. We just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then, yes, I respectfully request that we add an amendment to the resolution to clarify that the money for the ARPA and the TID four closure and the TID six closure is committed to these projects. It's a thing I need for audit purposes in order to have this in a separate fund, which is helpful for me for tracking purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Gabriella, seconded by Jay.
Would you like the language now?
Yes.
All right.
Whatever Misty says.
Be it further resolved by the Pittsburgh Common Council that it commits the city of Pittsburgh share of excess increment from the TID number four and TID number six closures towards projects included in the investment plan as further refined through the capital improvement plan, also known as CIP, and budget processes.
Are you okay with that wording on your motion, Gabriella?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good, good. Jay, are you okay with that? This is your second?
I couldn't be happier.
Oh, good, good.
A little reverse there, but all right.
All right, is any comments on the amendment? All right, so first we have to vote on that change. So all in favor of making that addition, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay? All right, question?
Yeah, just one thing, Misty. We talked about this in finance, but just for the rest of the committee, the intention is to do an update to this plan annually until we've spent all the funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted everyone to know that, just in case you're wondering.
Any other comments or questions on the entire plan? Seeing none, then all in favor of approving the 2023 update to the ARPA TID closure investment plan, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Mayor's report, the only thing I'll say for people at home and people you might be talking to is now is a great time to apply for committees and commissions. I know that there's a lot of openings. We did fill the Agonoral Affairs one, but I know there's at least one more coming. So that's part of the reason why I wanted to get that full before there was more vacancies. And I know there's a lot of other committees that don't have that full list yet. I don't know that Lisa has that full list. But the next mayor will be making those appointments. And so now is a great time to get that in if people are interested in committees. Because I know there will be openings for that question.
Is there a plan to put that out on social media and do like news alerts and things of that? Because I haven't seen that yet, but I know we're getting pretty close to reappointment time.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we've done that in the past, and absolutely, we want to do that again.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. So it's the first meeting of a odd number. So District One starts. David?
We were... I was successful in getting 50 bikes from Free Bikes for Kids for our neighborhood, and I plan to distribute 25 Lower King James Way and 25 in Three Fountains. And I'm wondering if I know an alder that's on the bike committee that might be able to talk about a repair day the same day we're doing that. So I guess, thanks to Free Bikes for Kids for allocating those for the neighborhood. The Winger Quarry, Mike left. The development of Winger Quarry is crawling along. There's a developer, there's a potential purchase. So stay tuned for that. Some residents are asking about surveys that have been done in their backyards. And then the last thing, mark your calendars, an event that I enjoy and I helped set up with, August 26th, the block party, the Lunafest, is scheduled for the afternoon of August 26th. And so I can always use more volunteers, and it's a fun afternoon.
Joe?
Yeah, so just a reminder, on March 30th, there will be the Boys and Girls Club Reality Store from 3:00 to 5:00. It'll be at the Allied location. It'll be youth sixth to 12th grade. And youth can sign up and do a simulation of what life will be like after high school. You can sign up on the Boys and Girls Club website. There, the Allied Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association is raising money. I'm not going to list the entire link, but there's a GoFundMe page. And if, you know, anybody would like to donate, please feel free to get in contact with me, and I can send you the link. I was recently appointed to the Board of Trustees for Madison College as an elected... There's a spot for elected officials, so I just wanted to make sure that was known. a spot for elected officials, so I just wanted to make sure that was known publicly. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Julia?
I have a couple things. The first one is that there's going to be another meeting for the, with the police, for the Call Police Community District Meeting for kind of like District Two, part of District Four. It's going to be March 23, 5:30, in the Fitchburg Fire Station Number One. It's the one on Lacy Road. So everyone is invited to participate. This is our community meetings. Then, the other thing I want to mention, that the courtyard at Fitchburg is the memory care building is going to be open in May 1. And also, we have received an email from Bennet from the Bicycle. So there are two locations in District Two that are coming, one in the McKiffin Park. He requested our feedback. I gave him my feedback about the two locations. And the other one is where the Winterham Hotel is, on the parking lot close to the, the bridge. Yeah, there's going to be another location there for the Bicycle. So that one is great, they are coming along. So that's it. I don't have anything.
I just wanted to say that when I walked into the room today, I noticed the new plaque outside for Frances Huntley Cooper. We named the chambers after her last year. I guess it was, it was a little while back, but we had the ceremony last week, I think. And it was really beautiful, honoring her contributions to the community in Fitchburg and also more broadly. But it was just really cool. So next time you're in council chambers, take a look at that sign and read a little bit about Frances Huntley Cooper.
Jay?
We had the meeting last week about the Sine Road reconstruction project. And there's a lot of questions that residents have. But one, probably the most significant thing that came out of the meeting is that rather than trying to keep the road open during construction, like was done with the existing reconstruction that was going on around Cheryl Drive, Sine Road's going to be closed. It's just going to be closed, because trying to manage that was too difficult. So, and if you ever went down there during the construction project, it was a pain in the butt. Even though they tried to keep it open, it just wasn't working. So I think that will help get the project done a little bit quicker, and Public Works will have less of a hassle to try to manage in the process of getting that done. Other than that, people have been pretty happy with snow removal so far, so yay.
Shannon?
No report.
All right, Randy?
Nothing to report.
All right. Big thing is, next week is coming to the hole. It's a little bit weird this month, like it was last month, unless there's a snowstorm and we have to cancel it again. What's the, what's the topic, or any?
Tree ordinance or preservation.
All right. And then two weeks, the next council meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Standing by Jay, standing by Randy. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Anna, opposed, nay? We are adjourned.